Do I look like I need more reading material?
Hello. Did anybody say hello? I'm trying to guess if my audio is working or not.
I can hear you, Mark. I just joined in. I can hear you.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Hello, everybody.
I would turn off my mic, but my house is extremely noisy. I'm using my AirPods, which I've never haven't used in a long time, and now I remember why because I can hardly hear anybody. So Yedira, I might have to just put mine on the speakers, too.
Hello, everyone.
Hey there.
Just have everybody on here, our board members. And it looks like we do. I don't see, I think our student rep on here, so I just want to make sure. Give one more minute. Okay, let's get started. So I am opening our Hillsborough School District work session. And the first item that we have on our agenda is our legislative priorities, input and planning with Beth.
Thank you, Erica. So hopefully you all had a chance to look through the draft list of potential legislative priorities. As I mentioned, in the situation page, our little subcommittee of advocacy team members, Martin, Mark, and Devlin, have been looking at some different ideas for this. We referenced our most recent legislative priorities from the last full session in 2019, and then the short session in 2020, as well as current Oregon School Boards Association priorities, and then some draft priorities from Portland Public Schools and Beaverton School District. So taking all of those things into account, we have certainly a lot of alignment among the different advocacy groups for K-12 education. And our top priority has remained pretty much unchanged over the last several biennium. That would be promoting stable and adequate funding for K-12 education. Even though we did receive the Student Success Act's passage and student investment account in the last legislative session, as you know, this is something that is a targeted fund, and it can only be spent on certain things, and it does sit outside of the state school fund. So that doesn't kind of absolve the legislature of the need to have strong support of the state school fund. And one of the items that we brought up in the short session in 2020 was the need to correctly calculate current service level. Right now, if you've seen the kind of the starting proposal for a CSL budget in the 2123 biennium is 8.9 billion, which is quite interesting considering we got nine billion in the current biennium. So I think by anyone's calculations, that wouldn't add up. The problem is that just to get to nine billion required a borrowing from that first disbursement of the Student Success Act funds. So as well as, I believe, some borrowing from the Education Stability Fund. So I understand why it's not necessarily starting at nine, but for us, that would certainly be a move in the wrong direction. Our preliminary estimates are that we would need a statewide allocation of somewhere in the neighborhood of $9.6 billion to meet current service level. And that is just kind of under normal circumstances, not taking into account additional costs that we may find that we incur once we start bringing students back to hybrid and fully in-person learning. So stable and adequate funding is a big deal. And also, it does help us when they retain the 4951 split of state school fund over the biennium, because, as you know, costs do increase every year. And the one or two times in the past that they've done a 50/50 split, which I kind of understand why, I guess, because it makes it seem like we're getting more money upfront, but it really does hamstring us in the second year of the biennium, because all of those cost escalators catch up to us. And then we're in a position where we need to be looking at reducing our budget further. So for us, a 4951 split would be the best way to go there. Another one I wanted to bring up that could be a real easy win is asking for either an expedited process for the student investment account applications or allowing us to roll our current student investment account application from this year to next year, considering that we did go through such an extensive and lengthy process to create our proposal that was submitted just in March of this year. And then, of course, COVID hit, and things have worked out quite differently than what we anticipated. So rather than have us expend all of that energy all over again, I think a lot of districts are going to be requesting that we could have at least an exception for this upcoming year where SIA plans could roll. COVID recovery for students is another area where there could be some good traction. I think that could be something that could really, you know, people understand that students have suffered in this time and that there are students who are going to need assistance to get caught up with their studies. And so while that would be a targeted source of funding, it could certainly be very useful for us. And we are going to be battling against the notion that education got theirs in the last biennium. And now, please step aside. So social services and other entities that get funded at the state level can lobby for additional funds there. So we need to find ways to give them, like, help us help you, right? We need to help them help us and not just be ringing the bell for, well, education needs more money, more money. But, you know, tie it to some current realities and look for ways that are going to be kind of mutually beneficial. So I think positing some of our need in terms of COVID recovery could work well for us. Another easy win potentially could be the effort to modify ORS 413.223 and 413.225, which are around funding for school-based health centers. It would be a relatively easy fix to the verbiage to allow recognition and funding for mobile clinics. That currently is not a possibility, the way the law is written right now. It is verified, I believe. Now, Mark can give us a head nod, that Representative Solomon is one of the ones that's carrying forward some language in this regard. And that one would be great for us, because we've got Virginia Garcia that's ready to go with their mobile clinic. And we've already done the legwork to kind of do a needs assessment for both Hill High and South Meadows. So for them to get services a couple of days each a month would be great. And that would be financially feasible if we could get that school-based health center annual support from the state. There's a few others on there, but I'm going to stop talking, stop filibustering, and let you guys.
You do have a couple questions on there.
Go ahead.
The first one, Lisa was mentioning the 9.6 billion for CSL is CSL based on our current service now, after millions of cuts during our prior budget cycle, correct?
That was a figure that I just got from Michelle a few weeks ago. So yeah, that's pretty current for us. Of course, we do have different factors at play. You know, now we have a little bit better sense of our enrollment. As we move forward, we'll see a little bit more about our expenses. But when I asked her to, give me a rough calculation for that a few weeks back, that was what she gave me.
And then there's another question here from Jackie of what should COVID recovery for students look like? What programs, for instance?
Well, I will give a general answer, and then if my teaching and learning colleagues want to pipe in, that would be great. But I would imagine extended learning opportunities over break periods, like spring break, summer vacation, things like that, even just after-school opportunities. Travis or Dale, other ideas, maybe?
I think that's spot on. We have had some high schools in particular request additional staffing for evening, either classes or tutoring that goes into the evening for students who are working that may need a different sort of structure. But I think additional summer opportunities will be key.
I'd also say sustained investment in technology and technology resources, digital resources.
And then there's a question on here from Mark, so we'll go with Mark and then Cheyenne.
Yeah, just one question more, more of a comment. Sorry, one question, though, Beth. I thought we had the holding the funding based on the number of students from two years ago as part of it. I don't see that one, but unless it's one of these.
I ran that by Michelle, and she didn't think that was a
Okay.
Good one.
All right. So I'm sure you guys all saw this, all the list in your packet. And as a member of the committee, Martin and Devlin and me and Beth, we, there's a lot on here, and I don't think our intent was to try to bring all of these forward as our priorities for this year. What we had hoped was to use these as a catalyst for discussion as which one should percolate to the top, which one should we focus on if we have conversation with legislators? Since sometimes we get so immersed in this that we forget that we're in our own little bubble. So it took, you know, it took explaining to Devlin that we don't have a lobbyist like Beaverton. We are a lobbyist. We just wanted to bring these ideas forward and get some discussion with everyone about which, maybe three. Is that about right, Beth? Three, maybe four? What do we normally go with?
Yeah, I think we tried to keep it at five or less. You know, we also kind of discussed the notion of having some top-line priorities and then some very ones that you guys have agreed on, but we're not going to necessarily push really hard on unless an opportunity arises so that we can focus our energies on, you know, the top-line ones, but then also have the others that are approved and kind of in the hopper if you need them. We could go that route, too.
Yeah, just really, this was just the catalyst for discussion, and I hope to hear what y'all think.
Thank you, Mark. A question from Cheyenne.
Yes, my question is around the bullet point that says limit COVID liability for school districts. I know that in the past, we've talked about how there's a huge insurance kind of liability on districts. Has that changed at all? Or what were we thinking in terms of specifics about how we would limit COVID liability for school districts?
Well, I do know that this is the big topic of conversation. It is a fear of school districts that by bringing that they will then potentially open themselves up to lawsuits claiming that people have gotten ill and then had whatever complications potentially as a result of being at school. It's perhaps been teased out for us a little bit in terms of the thought being that if it's a staff member, perhaps if there were a claim, it would be covered under workers' comp, leaving the big question mark to, well, okay, so what if it's a student? What if a student is a carrier but gives it to their parent? You know, I mean, just kind of all those circles of potential. And I think this certainly wouldn't be something for us to champion on our own. It would be more along the lines of, okay, what's getting momentum at a state level? And how we lend our support to that? Because obviously, I mean, we want to be good stewards of taxpayer money. And if we're paying, you know, if we're tied up in lawsuits, that doesn't really serve our constituents in the best way possible. So certainly limiting our liability and exposure would be great. It's unclear as to whether or not there really is a path to getting that kind of protection or not.
There's some questions also just in the chat room. And maybe Michelle, if you can look at those and see if you can answer Lisa's particularly on there.
So Lisa, thank you. I do think that if we had been fully funded for the last biennium, going into the next biennium, we, our current service level demand would be just right around $10 billion. We made cuts in both years of the biennium. So it was 9.6 million that we reduced in 1920. And then for 2021, we decided to reclassify just around $4.5 million of current service level general fund expenditures that were allowable under the Student Investment Act to the Student Investment Act. So we didn't necessarily make reductions. We just moved them to another fund in the current year. So does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you, Michelle.
Jackie, I can answer the question about this, raising the virtual charter school cap. That currently, there's a 3% cap of your total students enrolled that you would need to allow to attend a virtual charter school that's out of the district. And there, every biennium, there's conversation about that. And this is something that there are groups of people that would like to improve that cap. And there's another camp that says 3% is plenty because of the financial hardship that it would cause a district. As opposed, in our particular case, we've got a thriving online academy that is really outpacing the state when it comes to graduation rates for online academies. So we feel like we have a great option, and we support the remaining at 3% on that.
Yedira, you had a comment as well?
Yeah. So I guess, at the state, what does it feel like when we keep saying stable and adequate funding? Have they gotten to a point, like the legislatures, where they just hear it and keep hearing it, that they don't really pay attention anymore? So that is, you know, one of my, just, you know, throwing that out there. I think we still should continue to do, but I'm just worried that it might lose its effectiveness over time. And then I really like making COVID recovery a priority, because I think that that is something that we will need as soon as possible. So once we get to the levels to where we can start seeing kids in school, I'm thinking enrichment, extra learning opportunities, all of that are going to be really needed sooner than later. So that's where I would like to put effort into really making sure that we can provide opportunities.
Thank you, Yedira. So Mark, Martin, Devlin, and Beth, you're looking more just for feedback. And I think, Lisa, you added your comments on there, and Yedira, you mentioned yours. So I think providing either in the chat, or if you want to give some guidance to our committee so that they can, you know, go back and work on these top issues. I tend to, I do tend to agree with Yedira in making that COVID being one of our priorities, at least from my point of view. And I do think that if there's a way of, I guess, because we are our own lobbyists of being creative about how we talk about stable and adequate funding. So we are, even though we're saying the same thing, but maybe saying it in a different way of how it impacts us specifically at HSD, of what we're looking at when we say that, what is it that is, what does it mean to us, right? What are those programs that we can't do? What are those programs that are going away? Or what are the things that we're losing so that we're talking about it in a different way? And maybe it resonates a little bit different. But I do believe that that's still something that should be on the very top of our priority as well. So then Jackie, I don't know if you want to chime in, or at least just type in the chat when you get a moment.
Yeah, this is Jackie. I tend to agree with Yedira about not beating a dead horse is the wrong term, but about stable and adequate funding. And I think if we are creative in how we do that, especially how we calculate, I mean, how the state calculates CSL, the current service level. Because I think that if that were corrected or consistent, then that might at least alleviate some of the issues, not all of them. So I like that one. I do think we need to do the COVID liability for school districts in conjunction with the student COVID recovery. I think that that's a really important issue. I would also say that the virtual charter school cap, if there is discussion at the state level to raise that, I would really strongly encourage us to keep it at 3%. I think that's, or at least put that on our list, especially since our HOA. When you look at the grad rates from some of the virtual charter school cap schools versus, you know, HOA, it's, there's no comparison. I mean, our graduation rate is so much higher than the virtual charter schools. So I just think it's important that we continue to grow that. And part of that is going to be maintaining the virtual charter school cap. I think all of these are great. I appreciate all the work you guys put into them. Those are just ones that stick for me.
Thank you, Jackie. And thank you, Cheyenne, for putting your comments in the chat. I would just also, Mark, because you serve on the LPC Legislative Committee with OSBA, with me to check and see if they're already kind of carrying the water for something really specific, which I think the liability issue, something that all school districts are really leaning heavily on. And maybe ours are more focused, something that we hear in this space that nobody else is maybe talking about, that we focus on those for our district. So with that, if anybody has any other comments, please just type them in the chat, and we'll move on to our next item, since we have some tight schedule on here.
I would just say, the 3% cap, until we know there is a bill for it, there's no reason to put it on our list as a, like, we're not advocating against something unless we know that there's a reason to. Right? So that's one thing. Erica's completely right about the fact that OSBA is advocating for a school liability pretty much across the board. So maybe that, when Beth was talking about our secondary priorities, that's something to put in there. And sort of anecdotally, what we know from the math Michelle has done so wonderfully, that current service level doesn't provide for any of the districts in Washington County. It's like every single one of them. And that includes banks at the small end and Beaverton at the biggest end. So anecdotally, I've been asking other board members in various meetings. So yeah, bank says, yeah, CSL. So I wondered, you know, was there a mean at some point in the middle of the state where everybody below is being overfunded and we're all underfunded? But that's not even the case. Everybody with lower student populations are not being funded at current service level either.
And Mark, just one thing to watch on the 3% cap is that there is some fear that when it comes to decisions being made about K-12 funding, that could be slipped in as a rider as K-12 funding is approved. So that's a thing that we'll want to be watchful of.
Yeah, so leave it on our list, but I wouldn't be so. And that's the other thing. As some of you know, I have another job. And so as we have to be the advocates, we don't have a lobbyist. I will, I'm glad I got a chance to work on the advocacy committee, and I will continue that. But when it comes to lobbying individual legislators, I probably will not be able to participate in that.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, our next item on the agenda is our current metrics and planning with Mike.
All right, I'm going to have some folks help me out, too. But just as review, you'll remember that last week, we had a press conference by the governor and some freezes being put in place or pauses being put in place in order to hopefully stem the upward trend of the number of positive cases that are currently out there throughout the state. And in particular, there are a handful of counties that have been spiking even to a greater degree. And Washington County, of course, has included that. If you look back at our last three sets of data when it comes to the metrics, we were at 143, then 189, and then this week, we're at 260 cases per 200,000. So that's a pretty significant uptick. And of course, when the announcements were coming out from the governor's office, one of our main concerns was how does this impact the planning that we've been doing as a school district? How does it impact K-12? And the long and short of it is that basically the guidance that was already in place remains in place for K-12. And the metrics that were changed just, I would say, four or five weeks ago now, those remain in place. And so those did not, that did not change. However, what it did do is caused us to take a look at some of our practices and some of the things that, as we continue throughout the winter, some of the things that we have on our radar or on the calendar, and to take a look at those and then make some decisions on those, whether we should pause those at this point or whether we just keep, or we keep moving forward with those. We had a conversation with Washington County Public Health yesterday. And due to the increase in the number of positive cases, they're quickly becoming overwhelmed, maybe too strong a word, but the number of cases is outpacing their ability to do contact tracing in the way that they have in the past. Travis, do you want to give a quick just update on that and what that means for schools?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. So each week, we meet with Marnie Kyle and Tricia Mortel, who are great from the Washington County Public Health. And this Monday, the tone was a little bit different as they talked about how the contact tracing is going with the number of cases that are happening in Washington County. The contact tracers are now shortening the interviews they're doing with folks, going a little less deep. And they're also limiting their contact tries, one or two attempts. And then if a person doesn't pick up the phone or doesn't talk to them, they move on to the next patient. And that led them to tell us that they're really treating the community now as the first line of defense. And what that means for them is that they're outreach to community members, including school districts, to tell us that it's really important that we help folks understand the power of self-isolating if they have a test, come back positive, also quarantining if they are aware they've been in contact with someone else. They also want to emphasize the importance of notifying employers. And they said there's a pattern in the county of people being really responsible about notifying their employers, as we've seen with our own staff and families. And then notifying people who are around you back to two days before. And so we had a conversation this morning with our transition team and shared some information from the county about how to talk to someone on the phone when they're reporting to you that they have had a positive test or that they're going to be quarantining. And so at this time, our registered nurses are handling all those phone calls and reaching out to staff and students and families to have those conversations. And so at this time, they're able to staff that for us. And we're going to be monitoring week to week our own nurses and the way they're supporting our staff and families and keeping them educated about how to be that first line of defense. and keeping them educated about how to be that first line of defense in the community.
All right, thanks Travis. The, the, the new information last week also caused us to take a look at, and the fact that our, the positive cases are increasing so rapidly in Washington County, it really did cause us to take a look at our limited in-person plans that we currently have underway and, and then to make, frankly, just to make some adjustments to that. So Elaine, I want to invite you to just give a really brief overview of some of the decisions. Well, first of all, I want you to start with the assessments and valuations that are going on and, and then go ahead and finish up with where we're calling for a pause right now. Oh, we can't hear you, Elaine.
I would love it if we could get like Google and Zoom and Microsoft off with the mute button in the same place.
That would be good.
We can wait for a second. I'm happy to pinch it too.
Let me, while, while she works on her, on her audio issue there, let me just go on to the, we've got a couple other items we want to cover. And if Elaine gets that fixed, then we'll invite her. If not Travis, if you could fill in, that'd be great. We also want to talk a little bit about the outdoor activities. As you know, districts throughout their region have been offering outdoor activities for students. And this is the week, yesterday is the day that we were set to kick off, to begin doing that. And we, in talking with Washington County, there's still a high level of comfort when it comes to offering those outdoor activities for our kids. In fact, you probably saw in some of the governor's documents that not only is there, there is a level of comfort there, but they're actually encouraging that, just because of the, the positives that that brings. So Casey, would you give just a brief update on what's happened yesterday and today?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. We have a, at each of our four comprehensive classes, we have a variety of cohorts that are having physical activity and athletic workouts. And the cohorts are broken up in different areas of the campus. Some may be on the two ends of the turf field or the tennis courts or other areas. We have a pretty extensive check-in and checkout process with the health screener and temp checks. And all the participants and coaches and advisors are required to wear face masks at all times and maintain social distancing. So there's very limited actually interaction, but they're all in the same place and have the opportunity to participate in some physical activity. So again, all four of our high schools are participating in that. We have a varied response from, you know, in 150 participants up into the 350 range of different high schools.
All right, thanks, Casey. I know, I think, I know all of the board members, you've been receiving messages from the community urging us to do that. So we feel good that, that, that fell in the acceptable category of things that we can, we can do. All right.
Mark had a real quick question. Mark, we tried to keep our cohorts at 25 and under. There may be a couple that are, you know, 26, 27, just to make sure we can keep all in the same cohort without having to split. But our, our goal is 25.
All right, Elaine, you want to give that another try?
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Oh, phew, okay, sorry about that. Not sure what happened there. Um, so I'll start by talking about our evaluation centers that are in place right now. We have two places we're evaluating students right now. These are one-on-one evaluations. There's plexiglass masks, shields. And we're doing our evaluations for special education with our school psychs at the Miller Annex. And then we're doing, we are doing our SLP evaluations. So we have a couple different evaluations, one-on-one, that have been going on for quite a while, and those are going terrific. You may recall that we talked about starting limited in-person instruction on November 23rd. And we were set to go with that. But after learning about the new freeze that we are going to be having, and then in consultation with the health department as well as our nurses, we've decided to go ahead and postpone and just put a pause on that limited in-person instruction just for two weeks right now, because we really are wanting to balance the needs, this, the health and safety needs of our staff and students, along with their needs for education. And so we will continue to serve them through comprehensive distance learning the best that we can right now. And then we will review again in two weeks and see if we're ready to serve them in person. We hope that that is the case and we will keep you posted about that.
All right, thank you, Elaine.
Sure.
Let me, let me wrap up with just a couple more things, then I'll see if there's any questions here. One of the things that we, we know that this is not a permanent state, that eventually we are going to be able to return to hybrid learning and then return to our typical delivery model that we're all familiar with and longing for at this point. In the meantime, though, we need to continue to prepare for when that occurs. So we don't want, we don't, as we have this lull or have we, or have we, as we have this uptick in cases, this is still a time where we need to continue to plan and continue to prepare for the eventuality of when we return. So we are continuing to do that. We're continuing to run our blueprint teams. We currently are, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be continuing the facilities walkthrough. And that's where we have principal and members of the Casey's team walking through our kindergarten, first, second grade classrooms and taking a look at how we can meet the guidelines for the limited number of students that are in a, in a given space. So we will continue that planning. It doesn't mean that we're going to start next week or the week after. In fact, it's, we know that that is not going to be the case. It does mean though, that the, the planning does need to continue. To that end, we are, we start our conversations with HEA tomorrow. So we'll have an opportunity to begin the problem solving with them and to have a, even a greater understanding of the concerns that have been, that have been raised. We did put out a staff survey, so we've got, we've got some great feedback on that. So we know areas that, that we need to address and be ready to communicate on that, to be ready to communicate on. In regard to communication, beginning next week, we're going, we'll send out a quick video and it'll, it'll, and we're talking two to three minutes as something that people can digest quickly and will, and will watch. And so we'll be sending that out next week and then we'll do that every couple of weeks with the most recent information. And that will get staff and then we can expand that as we move forward. All right, that really is the update that I had for you today on this. Any questions we can quickly answer before we slide into the bond oversight presentation? All right.
Thank you, everyone. Our next item on the agenda is our bond oversight committee report with Adam and Matt Buckingham.
Thank you. Can you hear me first of all? Okay, great. It's my pleasure to be here again tonight with Matt Buckingham, the chairman of our citizen bond oversight committee. With all of the, everything that's happening in your world right now, I hope that what we have to present tonight is a positive, positive news that can really help to kind of bolster things and, and give us something to look forward to once this all is behind us. So I'd like Matt to start, first of all, with just kind of some brief comments about the oversight committee and how we've been dealing with our work during our social distancing. So Matt, if you're there.
Thanks, Adam. Yeah, so the bond oversight committee has been meeting quarterly. We have been meeting with video conferencing and it's gone really well with very few technological glitches. It's been a great summer for construction, great weather. So we were able to do a lot of building tours. Everything is looking great. I've been really impressed, especially with the way the transportation center works. I was expecting a much more vanilla kind of building, but it's actually a really nice project. And I also just wanted to give a shout out to Superintendent Scott for his flexibility on some things like the pathway center. We're rethinking the pathway center and Miller West and what's going on over there. And I think we've just got a great plan. I'm very excited about that. And maybe with that, I'll go ahead and pass it back to Adam.
Thank you, Matt. As Matt said, it's been a challenging time for everybody. However, in the construction world, we have actually been able to take advantage of the fact that we don't have bodies in our buildings right now. And it has allowed us to, to kind of expedite some of these projects. So I know we're on a tight timeframe. I've got 25 slides in 30 minutes. So I'm going to plow through this and answer questions along the way or when we finish. So 2020 bond projects, these in 2018, 2019, and finished in 2020. Others are projects that we did over the 2020 summer. So the first of those is our fiber optic. And as you'll remember, this was, the intent of this was to get all of our district buildings onto a fiber network that allowed us to have redundancy and to eliminate our need to have a Comcast bill every month. Also gives us much more ability to expand our bandwidth. We are done. We have all of our buildings now on our fiber network. Jane included some fun facts there, 82 miles of fiber optic cable have been laid. The last two buildings, Atulati Ridge and what we call ES29, which is our school in South Hillsborough, will be the last buildings connected. But at that point, we currently have 44 schools and buildings connected to that fiber network. The other big project that we started in the summer of 2020 was Atulati Ridge Elementary School. If you've been by that school, it's really starting to look like a building at this point. We have all of the steel up. We've poured the, the concrete for the floors on the second level there. The framing of the first four rooms has begun. So that one's really going really well. I'm really happy with the contractor we have there, Kirby Nagelhut. And as it mentions there, we did have a beam signing there, an opportunity for the community to participate in that, since we couldn't do a ribbon cutting or groundbreaking or anything. This was an opportunity to get the, the community involved. On the other end of the spectrum, we just completed the new Brookwood Elementary School. The school broke ground in the spring of 2019. And over the course of that 16 months, we built the new school, demolished the old school with help from some of our school board members. And I, I think any, everybody who's been in that building is just really pleased with the way it turned out, with the grounds, the interior of the building. It's just a beautiful space. I can't leave kids back at that building. We also had a small project this summer at Butternut Creek Elementary School, where we replaced the domestic water pipe system there and installed new, a new bubbler fountain. This was a project that was going to be part of the rest of the Butternut Creek elementary improvements next summer, in summer of 2021. But the state of that water pipe system was such that we needed to get it done ahead of time. So that work was all done over this last summer. Eastwood Elementary School, the last project at that school was the new gym. And that, that building completed in, we actually had a grand opening for that building in February, right before things kind of fell apart. We also did roofing. And you can see it's a beautiful new roof on the entire building. And security upgrades are happening right now and we're ready to go live in that building before the end of the month. WL Henry, the interior work on that building was completed over this summer. And we have one last little bit of HVAC upgrades that we need to do that we'll be doing next spring. But the rest of the work on the interior of that building is complete. The new gymnasium will be done by the end of this calendar year and will be ready for new, for students when they do return in January. And it's the, let's see, fourth of our new gymnasiums. And it's just as beautiful as the, the other three that we've completed. Indian Hills Elementary School. This project included seismic upgrades, HVAC upgrades. We took out an old two-classroom portable building and replaced it with a three-classroom modular building with restrooms. We ended up completely replacing the playground and all the asphalt on the backside of the building there. And so they now have one of our ADA accessible playgrounds. We, we built a new ADA accessible restroom and improved the, the front parking lot. We also did some half-street improvements that were required by Washington County. Mentor Bridge Elementary School, they have a new gym that will be complete about the time students come back, hopefully in the middle of, of January. We also extended the parking lot there to accommodate both better circulation for parents and buses and also to provide parking for the new gym. We also did seismic and HVAC upgrades in that interior of the main building. We replaced an old two-classroom portable building with a two-classroom modular building with restrooms. And that building is, the gym is scheduled to be done here very shortly. Muberry Elementary was the last new gym that we opened with a full-blown grand opening in, in March. And we also finished the new playground there in March. Over this last summer, we replaced, I don't know if you were familiar with Muberry Elementary School, but each of the classrooms had a sliding glass door that exited out to the exterior of the building. Not a very safe and secure way for our kids to be. So we went through, replaced all of those sliding glass doors with windows and made the, the campus much more secure. The last part of that project is the new HVAC units that we put outside required us to put some sound walls around them because they were a little loud. So that work will be done here in the next weeks. North Plains Elementary School, their new gym is well underway. It should be done before, well, it says here November. I think it'll probably be closer to the middle of December when that gym is complete and ready to be open. We also expanded the parking lot there so that we're now able to separate buses and cars. We had to move the baseball field. It's a memorial field. We've moved that, relocated it and are moving all of the memorials for that field to the back part of the, the new baseball field. This next summer, we'll be doing the interior work and roofing work at North Plains Elementary School. You'll see that coming up here. We also are at both Lat Acres and McKinney for the new gyms that we're building at those two campuses. McKinney, as you can see, is a little further along. Lat Acres, we're still getting through the land use process and some of the permitting. But both of those are scheduled to be open and ready for students come September of 2021. In addition, we'll be doing interior work on, at both of those sites that I think you'll be seeing on the 2021 projects. Brown Middle School was the last of our middle school projects. That was completed in October. Remember, this is the second summer of work at, at Brown Middle School. This summer, we finished the roofing. We replaced, I think there's about 85 skylights up on the roof. We did, they have a whole new roof over that part of the building, HVAC upgrades. We also moved the main office from its previous location, which was kind of centered in the building, over to an area that allows us much better, allows us to secure it much better. We can actually put an entry vestibule there. So the main entrance to Brown Middle School is now up by the front parking lot and is much more secure. And let's see, Evergreen Middle School, I think some of you at least through that new addition that we built there, 18,000 square foot addition with a media center, six classrooms. It's just, it's a beautiful new building. with a media center, six classrooms. It's just, it's a beautiful new building. Glencoe High School, we have completed the new addition with the media center, science classrooms, counseling space. Renovated the old media center into classrooms and science classrooms in addition to a new weight room, which was, we relocated the old weight room to make room for our building trades program, CTE program there. We have new furniture. We have new auditorium seating, half-street improvements on Glencoe Road to include sidewalks, bike paths alight at the north end of the, entering into the north parking lot. We relocated the tennis courts to make the, that north parking lot function much better. Can't wait to get kids back in the building so we can actually see it work. But, and we also built the new commons area to connect the old cafeteria in the main building. And again, it's just, it's really a beautiful, some beautiful new spaces. Hillsborough High School.
If I could just pipe in here for one second. On Glencoe, one thing I really like that they did is we've got, now got the library right at the front of the school. Before, the media center was kind of tucked back in the attic, clear at the back of the building. Now it's got a much more central location right at the front of the school. I think it's great what they've done.
Yep. Hill High, we are done at Hill High with the exception of some landscaping. And the list of things we did at Hill High goes on and on. But I think many of you had an opportunity to walk through that. Every classroom in that building has been renovated with new furniture, with new floors, with new ceilings, much lighter, brighter technology enhancements, seismic HVAC work, the new AutoTech expansion. We added four bays to their AutoTech program. We put in a new fire access road to provide emergency vehicles with a secondary access onto the site. And then probably the most notable, noticeable thing was that we completely repaved all of the parking lots there, both the student lot and the main lot. And it's just, it really kind of put the finishing touch on that building.
And they also put in that practice field, which you can see in this photo down to the lower right, which is great because I know that a lot of the Hill High students, when they were having to practice, they were having to be transported to another school. Now they've got a practice field right on the field there, and it just really pops in addition to the stuff that was done to repave the parking lots there. It's really beautiful. And all of the, you can see here in the photos, all of the accents they did to make these older buildings just look brand new. I think it's just fantastic. The office as well is just, just a vast improvement. It has a lot of character.
Yeah. The new transportation services facility is complete and operating right now. We have both our, a portion of our transportation fleet is now located to the other end of the district. Makes it much more, just makes it much easier for our transportation facility or our transportation to operate throughout the district. We also have our maintenance and facilities teams there, groundskeeping staff in the new building. And again, I think some of you have had an opportunity to walk through that new building. If you haven't, I would love to show off this building and any of the others. It really is a first-class, state-of-the-art facility. And it does include a classroom upstairs for a diesel mechanic program and a lab downstairs that you can see in the picture there on the left with the intent that we can teach a diesel mechanic program there. Finally, for our 2020 projects, we did roofing projects at Eastway, Brown, Century, Liberty, and at the Miller Big Picture Campus. So it was a busy summer, and having access to the buildings for a little extra time was very helpful. So for 2021, what do you have to look forward to? We will be at Jackson Elementary School. You can see the rendering there of the new gym that will be out off of Jackson School Road. That building is scheduled to open prior to students coming back in August. And the rest of the building renovations there, that would be primarily HVAC safety improvements, will happen during the summer of 2021. The project that Matt was referring to a little bit earlier, the MEC Pathways Center, that will, that building will start construction on the site work in mid-March. And the modular building will be set and ready in August. So when kids come back in September, we'll be ready for them. We will be doing building improvements at Peter Bosco. We're going to finish the roofing that we had started earlier in the, in the bond program. We'll also be doing some seismic upgrades at that site. We'll also be relocating two portables from North Plains to the Peter Bosco site. Butternut Creek Elementary School, we've got seismic work. We've got roofing. We're going to be adding a new bus drop-off area to the backside of the building and relocating the modular building to the front of the building. Farmington View, we've got seismic roofing. We're adding air conditioning. We're also going to be replacing all of the old single-pane windows at Farmington View. We've got boiler and DDC upgrades, and then we'll be improving the drop-off and parking at the front of the building. Groner Elementary School, we've got seismic work. We've got roofing. We've got piping. We've got a lot of ADA work there. We'll be putting in an elevator both at Groner and at Farmington View. Jackson Elementary School, we've mentioned, will be doing the interior renovations, lat acres. We've got a lot of HVAC work to do at that building. It's similar to Hill High in that it's several different buildings on the campus. So the HVAC work is pretty extensive in that place, in that building, doing seismic work in there as well. McKinney Elementary School, we've got seismic ADA. We will be working in the media center on the seismic work. And then at North Plains Elementary School, now that the gym and the parking lot are done, we'll be back this summer to do seismic roofing, DDC, and the new playground, which will go where the two portables are currently located. They're going to be moved to Peter Bosco. We are also working on site development at ES-29. And depending on when we choose to move forward with construction on that site, we'll either start construction in the summer of 2021 or potentially 2022, depending on the capacity at Rosedale, where those students currently go. Indian Hills Elementary, we are in land use right now for some road improvements. Mentor Bridge will be doing some canopy roofs on the little overhangs that, over the classroom, the exterior doors into those classrooms and putting aluminum coating on those roofs. And then at Century High School, we're replacing a large portion of this EFS exterior service. It's kind of like a stucco that is failing, that needs to come off so that we don't lose any of those. And then at Hairfield, we've got a domestic water pipe replacement project. Okay, so that's everything we've done, and we've got coming up. And I'm happy to answer questions about any of these projects. I know Matt would be more than happy to weigh into. I see we do have DDCS, direct digital controls. Those allow us to remotely control the HVAC systems. So we have a central location where we can control basically any of the heating and air conditioning throughout the district.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Matt. Board members or student reps, if you have any questions, feel free to just type in the chat. I just want to say, even though our kids aren't in class, I'm so appreciative of all the work that we've been able to complete because of that. So you're truly making lemons, making lemonade out of lemons. And I'm just so excited also about when we do have our kids and our families come back, they're just going to see such a difference in their school environment and the updates. And so I'm thankful that when they come back, that's what they're going to be greeted with. It's kind of like a celebration also of all the updates that we've done. Thank you so much for your work, Adam and Matt, for cheering.
No, it's very exciting. We're happy to, happy to be a part of it.
So I don't see any other questions. Just lots of kudos also. Thank you again.
Great. Well, thank you.
Board members, we have a 15-minute recess before our board, regular board meeting. And just a reminder that tonight, we will be doing our joint work session with the city of Hillsborough, and that will start at 7:30. So I, so if you see me trying to keep us on time, it's because we have to get to another meeting right at 7:30.
Six thirty.
Sorry, our, our, no, our council meeting with the city of Hillsborough starts at 7:30.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, our regular session does start at 6:30 right now. So I'll let you all get some refreshments, and then back here at 6:30 with that. We'll recess. So I'll let you all get some refreshments and then back here at 6:30 with that will recess. Okay, I see all my board members here. Just make sure Jackie's also on here before I get started. Okay, let's get started since we do have a packed agenda and we're gonna, having a hard stop here. So I am calling our Hillsborough Board meeting into session. And our first item is to do our pledge of allegiance. So please, if you would join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Our first item is our approval of agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
So it has been moved by Mark and seconded by Yadira. If there are no comments, please signify by voting by or nay in the chat, please. Okay, the yes votes are Mark Watson, Lisa Allen, Yadira Martinez, Martin Granham, Jackie Spross, Shan Kim and myself, the motion carries. The next item is for audience time, but seeing as Beth just commented on there, we have no request to speak at the moment. So we will move on to our next item on our agenda, which is our consent agenda.
Move to prove the consent agenda as written.
Second.
So it has been moved by Mark and seconded by Jackie. If there is no comments, please signify your vote in the chat. Okay, the yes votes are Lisa Allen, Shan Kim, Mark Watson, Yadira Martinez, Martin Granham, Jackie Spross and myself, the motion carries. Our next item on our agenda are, is our action item, item section. And we have gifts and donations with Michelle Morrison.
Thank you, directors. As you know, every month, we report to you our donations of $5,000 or more. And this month, we have a $10,000 donation from the Ballmer Group of Goldman Sachs Philanthropy Fund to Farmington View Elementary School for the migrant farm community. $5,071 from the MLAPTA to ML elementary school for Chromebooks and $5,000 from the Oregon Community Foundation to the Hillsborough School District for the Indian Education Program. That being said, I can tell you that even in this historic time, we are still receiving many other donations to support our students and families. And even though it's not specifically called out to be accepted here, I would like to ask Beth to talk a little bit about the work that HSF, Hillsborough Schools Foundation is doing on behalf of our students as well.
Yes, thank you for letting me do that. I'm just gonna read this quick little passage that appears in our Look Inside newsletter available on our website. For anyone who has not seen the full version yet, please go check it out. But Spring created a COVID crisis fund to support our most vulnerable students. And to date, donors have contributed more than $70,000 to that effort. Much of the money in the crisis fund will support our food programs over the course of the year. HSF has also helped raise $43,000 for art supplies and programs at the elementary school level and for school supplies and headsets to support distance learning across the district. A $20,000 grant from the Oregon Community Foundation supplied nearly half of those funds. And an $18,000 grant from the Richard B. Siegel Foundation provided another large chunk. The Siegel Foundation also donated $9,500 in support of the Greater Than Project at Lincoln Street Elementary School. In addition, HSF secured a $15,000 grant from the Hillsborough Community Foundation back in the spring, as well as the $25,000 grant from Intel Corporation to support students' technology and internet connectivity needs. So I mean, they have just, HSF is working overtime on our behalf. And we just could not be more grateful, not only to them as a connector, but also to all of the funders that have really answered the call in support of our students. It's very humbling and we just are very grateful.
Beth, if I could just add on for 30 seconds, if we look at the way that the Hillsborough Schools Foundation has made the adjustment to the times we're in and the needs that we're experiencing, it is just so incredibly impressive. And if you think back several years ago, they were, they were doing classroom grants and teacher grants and those kinds of things. And then over the years, they've, they've made that transition. So they're doing, whether it's science kits or whether it's in, yeah, making sure our middle school shop classes or CTE courses are up and running and they need just so impressive. And then as we've entered this time, their ability to assist our students in, in just the most direct and meaningful ways is so impressive. So oftentimes, Erin or other members of the Hillsborough School Foundation is out there listening. And I hope, I hope that they're listening and are hearing our sincere appreciation. We truly appreciate everything that you do for our students.
Thank you, Hillsborough Schools Foundation and Beth and Mike for that. And at this time, I would ask the directors to accept the donations as listed in the packet.
I move that the Board of Directors accept the donation of $10,000 from Ballmer Group of Goldman Sachs Philanthropy Fund to Farmington View Elementary School for Home Outreach for the migrant farm community. $5,071 from MLAPTA to ML Elementary School for Chromebooks and $5,000 from the Oregon Community Foundation to the Hillsborough School District for the Indian Education Program.
I'll second.
So it has been moved by Martin and seconded by Lisa. Are there any further comments? If there are none, please signify your vote in the chat. Yes, both are Jackie Spross, Lisa Allen, Mark Watson, Yadira Martinez, Shan Kim, Martin Granham and myself, the motion carries. Our next item on our agenda is reports and discussion. And we're back with you, Michelle, with financial report. Oh, actually, we have one more item in our action. Sorry, I skipped over that one. Our Student Investment Act Agreement, but it is again with you, Michelle.
Thanks, Erica. Yeah, we don't want to skip this one. It's come to our attention that this is the next step in our Student Investment Act grant that we worked so hard for to get last year. And we did all of the work in the spring. You guys were very involved and Travis led in terms of getting feedback and input on the plan that we put together. And that was put forward and approved. At that time, the second step for us to access the funds is to ask the board to review and approve the grant agreement for these funds. It's really atypical and it's written in the ORS that this step happens for us. So we're putting it forward here tonight to have you review and approve the grant agreement.
I will make the motion. I move that the Board of Directors approve the Student Investment Act Grant Agreement.
I will second.
Okay, it has been moved by Lisa and seconded by Yadira. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please signify, signal your vote in a chat, please. So far, the votes are, yes, yes, votes are Martin Granham, Shan Kim, Mark Watson, Lisa Allen, Yadira Martinez, Jackie Spross and myself, the motion carries. Now we move on to reports and discussion.
Great, thank you. I'm excited to have the opportunity to spend so much time with you guys tonight. I just want to give a shout out to the Human Resources Department. Example of our, supporting our buildings. We've been coming together as part of a blueprint team. We call it the HR and B team to work with our union leaders and across our departments as work on plans to bring staff back. And that's just another example we've included here. The business office has been extremely busy in these unusual times. The restrictions around both revenues and expenditures don't change for us. And you can see the detail there in that report. I'm also happy to answer any questions you might have about the cash flow and where we are for the year.
Don't see any questions, Michelle. Thank you, Michelle, for the update. Moving on to our next item on our agenda. It's our policies first reading with Mike.
All right, thanks, Erica. You can see we have a number of policies that are on first reading. And we don't have too much time set aside for this. But I did want to allow just a few minutes for Travis to speak about one of the policies that he is shepherding through as well as Connor. So Travis, you want to kick us off with the all students belong? And then we'll transition to Connor following that.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Can you all hear me okay? I wanted to say a few words about this policy because it comes to us in an interesting way. And I think it's important to know the origin of it and find it. So this summer, Governor Brown started getting an increased number of communications from students around the state about symbols of hate. And she ordered the Oregon State School Board to adopt a rule called All Students Belong in the state of Oregon. So on September 18th, the Oregon State School Board adopted this rule. It goes into effect immediately and is now part of Division 22. It's Division 22, 2312. And by January 1, it requires school boards to adopt a policy addressing three different things. One, it, it bans three specific symbols of hate. And I'll talk about those in just a second. It also has school boards adopting a policy to address bias with some specifics about how to accept complaints and hear issues up through the chain of command in a, in a school district. And then it also requires us to provide instructional materials and training for staff and students regarding what that process looks like. And so in Hillsborough, functionally, we've been prohibiting swastikas, Confederate flags and nooses for a long time based on some limits on free speech that we understand and the disruption of the educational environment. And so this policy is sort of parallel to our anti-discrimination and our harassment and bullying policies and practices. But we bring it to you because we think it's important. And this will unify districts across the state in taking these steps. I also wanted to share, and I wanted to thank Sayyida Hagigi and Francesca Sanapi and Rose Roman, taking a look at the language of this policy and making it add up with our HSD Educational Equity Policy. One instance of that is that we replaced OSBA's recommendation for the protected classes of folks. And we added that same list from our equity policy, including folks like immigration status being protected from discrimination in our district. status being protected from discrimination in our district. I know the Boards had conversations about that, so thank you. Another detail that we worked on, because honestly, the Oregon Department of Education is still working on how this looks, and they've acknowledged that districts may need to update this policy, even though we're all attempting to get it adopted by January one, which is the deadline in the rule. An instance of where this is still a work in progress is that regarding the swastika, Hindu and Native American folks like Hopi have come out and suggested that a ban on a swastika, a shape essentially, would infringe upon their religious rights, as that could be a religious symbol, from way before Nazis appropriated it in the nineteen thirties. So, in an effort to be clear in HSD's policy, we've specified the language, the Nazi swastika or the German hakenkreis, which are specifically that graphic with that rotation on that background. And we hope that folks understand exactly what we mean, and we hope that students who might have embroidery in their clothing that signifies something different will still be allowed to wear that clothing in HSD. So with that, we hope that you would take this under thirty-day review and ask our team any questions or clarify the spirit of the policy or the, the way the policy is written. Thank you.
All right, good evening. I just wanted to follow up with a couple of questions that came forward today. One was for policy GBDA, expression of milk or breastfeeding in the workplace. And there was a question that Lisa brought forward about the last line around the policy only applies to employees who are expressing milk or breastfeeding for children eighteen months of age or younger. And so, there was a connection to this language that was connected back to the ORS six-five-three-point-zero-zero-zero-seven-seven. And this was adopted previously, but we are going to follow up and look into the idea of maybe removing this language, because it seems very appropriate in the sense that we could denote that per the ORS and not need to put that in the policy, because we don't want to be the judge of people's choices that they have in, in choosing what they want to do around milk or breastfeeding, and also the age piece that's connected in there that could be interpreted in a different way if you just see it in isolation versus seeing the whole ORS. So I just wanted to follow up on that. And then, the second one was the policy that had to do with our drug and alcohol testing and record query for transportation personnel. And it was a question that Jackie brought up around marijuana and the legalization of marijuana, and how does that play out, especially in pre-employment? And so, she then emailed me back and said that she found the answer, and that was on, on page one-eighty-two. And that's when it comes to testing for any of those kinds of things, there is a responsibility for commercial driver's license. Those with the commercial driver's license are those, better school bus drivers, that require them to have a clear pre-employment drug test in order to drive, thus, for our students and students in general. So I just wanted to follow up on that piece. If you have any other questions in regards to any of the policies that are on thirty-day review, I'm happy to follow up on any of those, so thank you.
Thank you, Kana. There is a question from, I think, I don't know, Jackie, if you still have a question first?
I do. Thank you, Lisa, for bringing up the eighteen months. I had missed that, and I absolutely support if we can remove that, removing that. So, two questions. Are there any policies that we currently have public meeting or public comment at meetings or anything that we need to adjust? And I think I've asked this before, but I, to be more relevant in, since we're doing virtual meetings. So maybe, I don't, I don't know. I'm just asking the question. And the second question is, any of the submission forms, they're mostly complaint forms or requests, are we working towards making those an online option? Or are they online? Like, you know, you fill it out online, then you submit it? Or do they all need to be printed and then scanned and submitted via mail or email?
I can take the second question. Okay. Let's take the first question. So in regards to submission for forms and complaints, part of the process that we have is that people do need to fill those out, and we have talked about, you know, adjusting those to make those electronic. But there's another step that's part of this process when a person submits a complaint is that we actually sit down and meet with the person and collect that information. And often, you know, sometimes they will add additional pieces on there, but that is certainly something, you know, we could, I can follow up with Rose and see if that's a possibility. I do understand in the world lives that we're living that that seems a pragmatic, you know, request that you're putting forward.
Yeah, I would, I, I think that might be a, it would take away a barrier to certain people from filing the forms if we were able to do it online, but still have the option to do it on paper and in person, so.
Thank you, Jackie. And I forgot also to mention a reminder that we have our translation services going on, so just be mindful how fast we speak so that they're able to translate. We have a question from Mark.
Maybe just a formatting thing, but on the J-H-S-F-G-B-N-A-A, it looks like, appears one's going away and the others replacing it. And normally, when that happens, we get a big giant delete across the thing, and it looks like you're just the one that aligns. I'm trying to change. So is it really just one's going away and the others replacing it?
I see Rose's head shaking, yes.
Okay.
And, and I can answer the policy question. Our policy BDTH that we just renewed is very broad in that it doesn't speak to any, any need to do it in person. We have the public comment form that we're using on our HSD website that's working great. And so, I don't think that any of our policies regarding public comment at board meetings need to be changed.
Yeah, I was going to mention the same thing. I don't think that so much policy changes as just adjustments in our practices, which we've made when it comes to public comment.
Any other questions? Don't see any, okay.
Just as a reminder, if there are any questions or suggestions on any of these policies, if you would get those to the staff members whose name is listed beside it within this thirty-day period, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next item on our agenda is, and I just wanted to double-check, Mike, on the reporting, there's no other, anybody else presenting on any of the other reports? I'm sorry.
We are actually ahead of schedule. Yeah.
Okay, our next item is HCU and HEA reports. So let me see if I can see if Jill and Melody are on here. See, he goes first.
I'm here. Okay. Jill Golei, Hillsborough Education Association President. And tonight, I want to, sorry, I'm on my phone, so I'm going to try to be really still because my computer was really glitchy, but I'm going to try not to be an earthquake for you guys. So first, I want to start off the night by thanking all of the HEA educators. As you know, American Ed Week is this week and presents everyone with an opportunity to celebrate public education and honor individuals who are making a difference in ensuring that every student receives a quality education. And you know, this year, we are really challenged with honoring our fellow peers from afar, but we know now more than ever how important and needed an encouraging word means to a bus driver, fellow bus driver, classroom teacher, cafeteria worker, or your favorite substitute. It is important to know we are all needed and feel connected, appreciated, and valued. I'm really proud of our union, the HEA union, and our solidarity and our collective voice. And I know that together, we will continue to make strides in our profession by advocating for ourselves and our peers and our students. So I just want to do a shout out to all of my fellow educators and think, and say thank you. Then, secondly, I just wanted to say thank you to the School Board for your questions last week when you held a meeting, for really digging in deep and asking a lot of questions about earning in hybrid and what that means and what that looks like. And I just want you to know how much I appreciate that and how much my members appreciate you really asking those questions. And I just wanted to say about, you know, bargaining tomorrow, we as a union are really looking forward to working with the district and really, you know, we're all in uncharted territory right now, and it's all new for us and potentially a new normal. And we want to do this right, and we want to do this right the first time. And mainly, the teachers are really concerned about keeping safe, right? And the safety piece, what it takes to keep safe and the protocols. And as, you know, we, we looked back last fall and in August, you know, we heard that that was like ninety-nine point eight-four percent of the teachers that were surveyed said that safety and cleaning protocols were their utmost importance. And ninety-two percent that, you know, temperature checks were important, and we are learning more and more about this virus from March until now, how important it is to have masks and just all those structures. So, you know, we're going to continue to work together with the district and just make sure that, that all those safety measures are there and that there's, resources are made available so teachers can meet the needs of their students and navigate this new normal and the workload that, that comes with it. So just want to say thank you for all that you do, and, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay, hi. Good evening. I just want to, you know, you, everybody knows, classified staff along with the other staff members are continuing to work through this pandemic and the increasing numbers on the matrix. It's not easy, but they continue to show up and do the work. HCU, we're getting ready to enter into bargaining on a new contract. HCU is currently forming our team, and we look forward to some great bargaining sessions. I don't have a lot more to say tonight, but I would like to ask that when decisions are being made about returning to school in either a hybrid or in a full-person platform, that classified staff are remembered. I have been thinking and talking with other school employees in other districts, both around Oregon and around the Northwest. I am not sure how things will work out when we return, but I do know that more classified staff will be needed. There is no way that a single custodian will be able to keep up with the cleaning of the classrooms between lunches and just daily touching. All of the touch points, I was reminded of the touch points of the doorstops and the little inside parts of the doorstops as a touch point for anybody under three feet tall. I'm also not sure how the SEAs, myself included, will be able to support all of the students that they need to support. If we go into a hybrid model, as you know, that there'll be half the, of the students will be in the class while the other half of the students are online. But I'm also wondering how the bus drivers will deliver lunches and students. And so, the district will have to look at creative ways to step adequately to properly cover the needs of the students and the district. While all this is going on, we do appreciate the district inviting and continuing to work with the unions on the reopening of the schools and taking our opinions into account on all the decisions that are made. And with that, we do appreciate the two-week hold on the Lippi program while we wait for the numbers to come down. I think that'll keep everybody, students, staff, safe. And thank you for your time, and I will continue to come to these meetings and express the concerns and the voice of the classified staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Melody. Thank you, Jill. All right, our next item on our agenda is audience time, and we have our student rep up first. So let me put on here, Meyer Devlin. Ilham is not with us today, but if you have any comments?
Today, I do not have any comments.
Thank you, Mike. Devlin? I don't like if you, we can't hear you. I don't know if your mic's on. Nope. We can come back if you like. Seems like we're, no, still not, no audio. So we'll come back to you if you have anything, or feel free to also type it in the chat. It'll make sure to loop back. Superintendent's time, Mike?
All right, thank you. So a couple of things. You, you heard some of the comments from both Melody and Jill, and we two are looking forward to starting those conversations. We start our, our conversations really formally tomorrow, and that will, that will just involve a lot of problem solving. We recently did a staff survey where we started to, and we've started to receive feedback from staff members regarding what their concerns are. Some things are wondering about, want to address some of those things that are currently in the rumor mill. And so, we feel like we're, we're starting to dial in on a pattern of concerns that we can start addressing as we have our conversations with both associations. So we look forward to getting that going tomorrow. And I would also like, with American Education Week coming up, I would also like to take the opportunity to thank the staff. If, if you just, I mean, we can all picture, because we've all been part of it, the way that education has changed over the last several months. And over and over again, our staff members have risen to the occasion, whether it's making themselves available to have their jobs repurposed and to do, reassign to do something different, whether it's teaching from a living room or an empty classroom, whether it's assessing students at a, at a remote location. We just appreciate again and again the work that our staff has done. We, we are all anxious to get back to in-person learning, to the model that we, that we're familiar with and that we know works really well for our students. Until that time, we'll continue to make the necessary adjustments and meet the needs of our students. So my sincere thanks to all of our staff members who every day go above and beyond to do what's necessary to meet the needs of our kids. Thanks, Erica.
Thank you, Mike. Just want to check back, Devlin, and see if your audio is working or not.
All right, is it working now, or?
There you go.
Okay, sorry, I don't know what was going on, but I turned my headset back. Well, anyway, it's working. So I do have a few things that I would personally like to say. Again, I would just like to thank everybody who came up and presented, and the information that was shared, I think, is really helpful to us. Also, with it being American Education Week, I, you know, again, I'd really like to thank all of our teachers who have been working so hard to make sure that people, or all of our students are staying engaged. Also, I mean, I don't really have a ton to say about what was discussed here. I mean, other than personally, I agree with a lot of it. I really, the All, the All Students Belong policy, something that I feel like, I just wanted to say that I, you know, I fully support it, really. I mean, the, I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm all for freedom of speech, but there comes a point where, you know, those symbols, like, you know, the swastika, the Confederate flag, all that stuff, it represents hate, and that's something that I personally can't tolerate. So I really appreciate the fact that we're taking a bit more of a, you know, we're taking a hard stance on this, you know, because everybody deserves to go to school and not feel like they're being persecuted for whatever reason. So I just want to say that I really appreciate all those things. Other than that, I have nothing else that I really want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Devlin. And now we'll move on to our director's time. Let me look at our list here so I can call on you. I'll call on you how I see you on my screen, so let's go with Lisa and then Mark. And I think we lost Lisa, so let's start with Mark.
And then Jackie.
I think she froze just at the right time. I think, you know, it was a good move to postpone, I'm not going to say cancel, the in-person tours of our facilities, but I appreciate the videos of Hill High and Glencoe, led by the great principals there, to show us the work that was done. So thanks to that team for putting those together. Not much else, looking forward to talking with the city council tonight, and I'll share, maybe I'll share the link in the chat. If you got, if you have nothing to do at nine AM tomorrow morning, you can follow along with the state budget forecast, which will be released tomorrow morning at nine AM. And if you enjoy watching economists present PowerPoint slides as much as I do, maybe you'll enjoy it.
Thanks, Mark. And Lisa, now you have been moved down because you last so. I got Jackie next.
Mark, I won't be joining, sorry. That just doesn't thrill me. No offense, but I want to say a couple of things. Well said, Devlin, about the all students belong. I think that's really important. I'm glad we're doing that. I also wanted to point out in our consent agenda, we had an English, the Oregon English Language Learners Report in Oregon report for eighteen and nineteen. And I didn't know this, so I just want to bring it to people's attention. So everybody knows that the targeted programs that are aimed to address needs of particular groups like free and reduced lunch, special ed, migrant education, and talented and gifted. Talented and gifted is only funded at the state level and most of those other programs get some federal funding. So I had no idea that the talented and gifted program is only state funded, that we don't receive any federal money for that. So I just thought that that was an interesting little piece of information that I thought I would share. I think that's, I think that's all I have. Yeah.
Thank you, Jackie. Martin and then Yedira.
I salute our educators. And they yield back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Martin. Yedira and then Chan.
I don't have much either. Just a big thank you to the educators out there. I mean, they're doing a wonderful job with, I couldn't imagine having to kind of figure out how to do my job all in a matter of months in a different way, completely different way. So I'm so very thankful and that they accepted the challenge and that our kids are, are engaged.
Thank you, Yedira. Chan?
Yes, I just want to say happy American Education Week and I'm just thanking to all our educators who've been so flexible and committed during these times. I really look forward to the conversations that we'll have during the bargaining sessions and so, and whatever outcome we can have from that. Looking forward to that. Look forward to this evening's joint discussion with Hillsborough City Council. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Chan. Lisa?
Okay. Hopefully my internet will stay steady. The benefits and lovely things about all being trapped in our homes is that in order to attend a meeting when you have a seven and nine year old, you have to go to the most remote corner of the house, which does not have a steady internet signal. So I would just echo what everyone else said. I definitely have a deep appreciation for our educators and just want to give a shout out to the folks that work so hard to make education work, especially right now, who are often kind of the unsung heroes. You know, we often think about teachers when we think about American Education Week and, and as a teacher, I love that. But there are so many other folks who support the work of education in America and in our district and we don't want to forget them either. So just a huge shout out to everyone who makes the system go because our kids couldn't have a future without you. So thank you. And then the last thing I just want to say, a really fun time last week, I got invited to speak to my son's Cub Scout den through Zoom about the rule of law for requirement. You know, there, there's, I'm elect, I got invited, but I knew that it would be boring. So I invited Representative Salmon to join me, could have a big deal now. So she came and they were very into that. That was a lot of fun. Obviously she got most of the questions, but it was really neat to kind of try and explain the work that we do in a way that fifth graders can appreciate and understand. So that was a good time and it gave me a renewed appreciation for all of you and the, the work that you're doing as well. Fellow board members to make that education that they're receiving possible too. So they thought that you guys are pretty cool and they didn't even know that we existed. So now they do. You're welcome. And that's all.
Thank you, Lisa. I second what you mentioned, that there are many caring adults in our education system that have been amazing and provide just a lot of support to our students and and that's kind of what I mentioned in our, my little spiel in the video as well and how much they inspire us. I also wanted to mention that this past weekend, Mark and I attended the Oregon School Board Association Conference. There was a lot of really good presenters and information. And it went really great for being also a Zoom conference, which is now going to be more of the normal of how we probably engage in the near future. But we also met with our regional group area. So I just wanted to update our board members that were planning our legislative summit that we do every year. And we have new faces and we have new legislators. And as we heard earlier from our committee, we don't have a lobbyist, so we are the lobbyists. And this is one great opportunity that we have to to make sure that we're letting them know what our priorities are and then also hearing what they're working on. So I think, Mark, you'll be, if you haven't already, I haven't checked my email today, but share our Google document with your board members so that if you have a relationship or know one of those legislators, so that you would put your name on that list and be in charge of inviting them to our summit, which we're planning in January. So I just wanted to bring that up to your attention. And I just want to thank you all. We have our joint work session regarding the SRL program with the city of Hillsborough. And so we are going to be talking with them about what we have learned from listening to our community, but our what our value system here at our district is and what we, you know, are hoping are some of the conversations that we get to talk, should we decide to keep this program, what are the changes that we're evaluating? So we'll be presenting and just talking more, I think, at that higher level of our philosophy behind this, this program and also not really getting super in the weeds yet because we haven't decided ourselves also in our board, haven't made that decision. And so this is just a preemptive meeting and having that conversation with the council. And today, the reason why we had to start at seven thirty is because they're having another session where they're having some public comments right now. So I just want to check in with Rose to make sure what the status is of our time. I think there might be a slight delay.
I, I did just receive a text from Robbie and he says that they are running late. So it'll likely be a bit after seven thirty, but I'm no specific time. So we, we probably should at least log on at seven thirty in case they make up a little ground.
Yeah. So just log in, kind of mute and hang on. Most, most of what's happening right now is just public comment that they're listening to. So I will see you then. Is there any other updates, Rose, about the, how do we, maybe just a brief? I think Martin asked, is there a new link?
Yeah, there's a new link. So we're going to leave this meeting and join at seven thirty. They just said that they will do their best to try to recess as close to seven thirty as possible, but not likely at seven thirty exactly. And they will begin as soon as they can. The mayor is going to do his best. So yes, please disconnect from this meeting and we will join the other one a few minutes before seven thirty.
And I just want to make sure everybody has the link. Everyone's good?
It's on the
It's in our calendar, right?
Yes, it's a calendar invite as a separate.
Yeah. Excellent.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. We are adjourning our meeting.
We have.
Um, we have.
Grateful that you all could be here. Oh my goodness.
It's gotta say, it's so nice to see all my school district friendly faces. So, and happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Thank you.
Anthony, how's the baby?
Hey Erica, she's doing pretty good. She's been a little bit of a pill this week. She found a new decibel of screeching and now she does it every time she either wants you to read her a book or if she something that she wants to know about. So like there's this book that has designs as a cover of a lot of bugs. And she will spend very literally 20 minutes shrieking at a very high pitch pointing at every single one of the bugs. It's fun, but after about five minutes you're like, okay, let's maybe do something else. Thank you for asking.
I'm also wondering how Lisa and Kyle are organizing.
I was wondering, are they gonna, are they gonna do the thing where they pass something to the other person? You know?
No, she, I got the downstairs, she has upstairs. So I need like a broomstick and I can just hit the ceiling here.
And the kids are in the basement?
All right, well, I count seven counselors. And I think Erica, we have our full contingent of directors. Is that correct?
Let me check that.
Olivia's camera is still off as well, Steve.
Okay, thank you. I know she was here. I think she stepped, must have stepped back away.
And Steve, if you don't mind, if we can check to make sure Morgan Quimby's audio is working, just because she's going to be presenting a little later. Morgan, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Perfect.
Mike, if you can just maybe text Yadira or Rose and see if she's able to find the link. I don't see Yadira on here. Thank you.
Okay, so while we wait for one more, Anthony, tell us more stories.
One really cute thing is I recently changed some strings out on a banjo. So I've been playing my banjo a little bit more as last time I brought it before a meeting. Now every single time she sees someone with a banjo on TV, she yells daddy. So I guess I'm proud of that. Why not?
Thanks Anthony. I see Yadira on here now. Thank you.
Wonderful. I will kind of reconvene our city council meeting out of recess and into our work session. And so thank you to those who are sticking with us. Thank you to those who are joining us. And with that, I'll turn it over to Hillsborough School District Board Chair Erica Lopez.
Hi, welcome everybody. So we were thinking we're going to do some introductions of our Hillsborough School District Board. But I also wanted to just give a brief overview of the purpose of our meeting today. So at the Hillsborough School District Board, one of our board goals has been adopted to become and to guide our district in becoming an anti-racist organization. And how we're tackling that is through a lot of participation and professional development for our board, policy review, and also systemic analysis of our organization. So one of the things that we wanted to look at is our SRO program and also assess that program in in how it aligns with our values and the philosophy behind that program and opportunities for improvement as our board analyzes how we want to proceed with this program. So this meeting is really to have a conversation with our partners in the city and to look at the options that we have and want to present and have a conversation around that. So with that, I want to introduce our board. And maybe I'm looking at my screen and seeing who I see first, but let's go and have Jackie, Mark, and Martin.
Jackie's press. Nice to see you all. Thank you for including us in this conversation.
Mark Watson, Hillsborough School Board, Century feeder system, I live in Aloha. And yes, thanks for being a partner in this project and having taken time to chat with us.
Martin Granum, very good to be here tonight.
Next we'll go with Sheen and Yadira and Lisa.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sheen Kim. That's our school board member. And I want to thank Mayor Callaway and the Hillsborough City Council for having us join this work session. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mieira Martinez. Thanks for being here.
Hello, everybody. Lisa Allen, proud member of the Hillsborough School Board. And I am so excited to get to see so many friendly faces on the screen. I missed seeing everyone in real life. Good evening.
Thank you, Lisa. And last but certainly not least, we have our student representatives to the board, Maya and Declan. Maya, do you want to unmute yourself? There you go.
Oh, hi, everyone. My name is Maya.
All right. Hi, everybody. My name is, my name is Devil Know. I'm one of the student board representatives from Liberty High School. It's great to be here and I would like to thank everybody for, you know, the opportunity to sit on this meeting with you guys.
Thank you, Declan. And I'll hand it back to you, Mayor, if you want to introduce our council.
Absolutely. Thank you. And again, it's just great. Many partners and good friends on the screen tonight. And so we'll go ahead and start introducing ourselves and we'll have finance committee go first. And then if we'll have transportation committee introduce themselves. That's, that's a good three and three way to go.
So we'll start with, you want to start with me?
We'll start with you, Mr. Chair.
Fred Nortigal, I'm the current chairman of the finance committee and president of the council and a lame duck. My term is over on 31st of December.
Go ahead, Olivia.
Olivia Alcare, city councillor.
Thank you. My name's Kyle Allen. I'm, I'm the lesser half of the Allen clan, as you're familiar.
Hello, my name is Anthony Martin. I'm chair of the transportation committee for now. And I'll pass it over to councillor Pace.
Hi, my name is Beach Pace. I have no affiliation with the Allens. And good to see everybody tonight. Rick?
Councillor Van Beveren.
Oh, councillor Rick Van Beveren. I'm always last, so.
So you'd think you'd be a little bit more prepared. Okay. And then, so hey, hey, Steve Callaway, Hillsborough Mayor. And I want to say I am proud to be HSD. And so, you know, again, a long time coming, our meeting tonight. So thank you all. Thanks for your patience as we get started a bit late. With that, I will turn it over. You know, we did not have our superintendent or city manager introduce themselves. I'll invite you two to do that as well and then take, take it from there.
Sounds good. Mayor Robbie Hammond, I'm the city manager for the city of Hillsborough.
I'm superintendent for the district. As our staff participates tonight, we will introduce ourselves at that point.
And if I could add one thing, just kind of as a parameter for tonight, you know, we are really looking at the 30,000 foot level. You know, we're not getting, you know, down into the operational component of things because as board and council, we deal with policy. And so that's really how we're listening to the reports tonight. And, you know, and our comments and questions will, will, will or should reflect that as well.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Callaway. And I would just echo to everybody, again, thanks for joining us in this meeting. And I just want to give a shout out to Hillsborough School District. As a father of three kids in the school district, I just appreciate everything you all do, especially during the pandemic. It's, it's tough. And we, we recognize that and just really appreciate you all. And we appreciate our partnership that we have between the city and the, and the school district. So Aubrey, if we can go ahead and begin the first PowerPoint. And we can go ahead and proceed to the next slide when you're ready. So by way of agenda, tonight, we are going to kind of divide this into two areas. We're going to talk about from the city of Hillsborough perspective, some of the efforts that we've been undergoing over the past several months since the summer in trying to assess our policing and finding out how, what we're doing and how we're doing. And so I'm going to go through some of the community engagement regarding policing in Hillsborough. We'll talk about changes and updates that we have made and are currently making. And then Chief Coleman is with us as well tonight, and he will be able to talk about specific efforts that the Hillsborough Police Department has been making as well. And then after that, we'll turn it over to Mike Scott and the school district to take it from there. Next slide. So some of this information, I know the city council has seen, but I wanted to bring the school board up to speed on some of these efforts. So again, back in early summer, essentially with the murder of George Floyd, we began some efforts to listen to some of the things that were out in the community, try to get a understanding of what was being said and trying to figure out how we as a city and also as a police department are responding. We provided multiple opportunities for that input. We used our city news newsletter. We use city council meetings, direct mail and newsletter, social media and press releases. And then we also had two facilitated listening sessions, one in English and another in Spanish in an attempt to try to get more people to give us more comments as well. In the end, we received over 200 comments. We were able to analyze those comments. We did break them into different trend groups. And we shared that with the city council of the August 18th work session. And I would add that the minutes and the video and the presentation for that work session are online on our website if anybody is interested. Next slide. So internally, along with all of the, the public engagement that we were trying to achieve, we also created an internal work group on public safety that was made a kind of a cross departmental team that was able to provide support to this effort and also support to our police department as we were asking a lot of questions. One of the efforts that we also undertook is updating our website. And if you go to our website, there's a significant amount of information in an attempt to really be as transparent as we can be with the data that we have. And we created a new police review and advancement website, which is pictured here that details all of the efforts that we've been undergoing over these past several months and what our next steps are. And I would encourage anyone that hasn't been at that website to go take a look. There's a lot of really great information there. Our next step is actually two weeks from tonight, we're having a work session with the city council. In the last work session, we were, we received direction that we should look into different ways to engage with our community and also different police oversight options. And so we've put some thought and effort into researching the best ways to do that. We'll be presenting the council on December 1st to explain what we found and provide some recommendations at that point as well. So that's kind of our next step. And with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to Chief Jim Coleman to talk specifically about the police department.
Thank you, Robbie. I'm, I'm assuming my audio is okay because I kind of audio bombed the end of the council meeting. So. Okay, I'm assuming that's a thumbs up. Good evening, members of the city council and school board. I'm joined tonight by Police Commander Scott Hewittson, who has oversight ultimately of our school resource officers through the investigations division. I've shared developments within the police department with council members on two previous occasions in the last six months. And I hope to quickly update them and brief both bodies on where a large portion of our energies are currently focused department. While these efforts are certainly influenced by the national conversation on policing, including policing in schools, many have been underway since the beginning of the year as a result of our change in police administrations. As an example, the department identified recommitment to community engagement as a major focal point at the start of 2020 and put the structures in place to accomplish this. The Community Outreach Division was created to put our longstanding community enhancement efforts on the same level importance as our patrol and investigations divisions. By the way, Commander Hewittson also commands the Community Outreach Division. We also shifted personnel to the division to increase capacity and efficiency. Part of that capacity is represented by two full-time employees, one of them being a police officer, working as a liaison team between the department, minority-owned small businesses, organizations for the underprivileged and underrepresented, and in direct dialogue with communities where a better rapport can be established. Another structural change and combination with the previously mentioned one is putting our patrol and training functions under the same command in the police department. This is intended to streamline the manner in which our specific approach to the community-based policing is incorporated into the practices of our most outward-facing function, which is the patrol officer. Our crisis intervention and homeless team has been at the forefront of helping cities support homeless and housing insecure individuals through the threat of the pandemic, the downturn of the economy and the onset of, the onset of winter weather. The team of two officers and a police lieutenant is being augmented by the addition of our first full-time officer and clinician patrol car. This will be done through the framework of the Washington County Mental Health Response Team and is a bolster of that team, which not only helps Hillsborough, but helps the whole county. All of our personnel will be going through citywide training on implicit bias. That training will be supplemented by specific training in the police department on fair and impartial policing. The fair and impartial policing training includes elements of community involvement, including partner training sessions with community members and police employees. I would add that bias and de-escalation training have long been woven into the structured training that is routinely delivered to the employees of the police department as we maintain their technical skills and help inform their decision-making. Can I get the next slide, please? Thank you. Finally, we've adopted a new mission and value statement designed to consolidate all the numerous functions and concerns of our work into four core elements. They are dignity, respect, service, and just outcomes. Each value is accompanied by a description of how it's manifested in practice and the positive effect it has on building trust and legitimacy. For example, our unique core value of just outcomes is defined in part by the statement that we encourage our employees to apply creative and asymmetric approaches to working with the community to solve problems. The courage to voice concern, empathy, compassion, and positivity are desirable characteristics in a law enforcement professional. Next slide, please. The School Resource Officer Program was focused on just outcomes for students, families, and educators long before we adopted that term. It may sound counterintuitive to hear that police in schools reduces physical arrests and youth referrals to the juvenile justice system. However, focusing on outcomes has that very effect. The program, those that work in it, and those that work with it have many times been the literal example of what we've tried to capture in the words just outcomes. Police officers assigned to the schools are provided the time and structure to engage in meaningful follow-through and long-term involvement such as mentorship, counseling, and placement and diversion programs. These are all components of procedural justice. There are things of great value that have been derived from the School Resource Officer Program. Victims that never were, exclusions from the learning environment that didn't take place, and even tragedies that never transpired because of it. It doesn't stop all bad things from happening. It isn't impervious to human error, shortcomings in judgment, or traits of character. However, it's always worked in Hillsborough because it's truly collaborative between the city and the district. Even now, those, those who know it best are working together to capture an evolution of it that builds upon trust already won and creates pathways to trust where it hasn't yet existed. Thank you all, both council and board members, for the opportunity to share a few hopefully quick thoughts with you. I certainly appreciate and the whole police department appreciates your I certainly appreciate and the whole police department appreciates your careful consideration as we move forward. Thank you, Robbie.
Thanks, Chief. And with that, Mike, we'll turn it over to you all.
All right, thanks. Appreciate the opportunity. So let me just kick us off here. And if we can go ahead and put up the second presentation, that would be great. I'm going to start and then we invite Morgan Quimby. She will be finishing up the presentation. And while I'm, while we're waiting for that slide to come up, I'd just like to thank both Morgan and Alex O. They've put in a tremendous amount of work into this process and and really helping us to understand not only what makes a quality SRO program, but also where as a community we stand on this. So just to let you know, we have been pursuing really two different avenues as we've moved through this very deliberate and comprehensive process over the last several months. And those two avenues find us exploring two different things. One of those being, what can we do to better understand what the change, what changes are necessary to have just the most quality SRO program and relationship with law enforcement that we possibly can? And to that end, we've gathered a lot of information that we're going to share with you. And we've worked to put that into a draft memorandum of understanding that we can start a conversation with law enforcement as well as the city of Hillsborough, as well as Washington County. So that is one avenue that we're taking is trying to capture all of those areas of concern, put those in a memorandum of understanding, and then address those and have avenues to address all of those concerns. So that's one avenue we're taking. And then the second avenue is really just a broader conversation about what does our relationship with law enforcement look like? And does the current model work for the students that we serve? So that's a broader conversation that's also going on. We've been, we've been having that conversation as well as the MOU avenue as well. If you'd go ahead and advance the slide one, that would be great. All right, during my time in the Hillsborough School Districts, we've had several iterations of what Hillsborough School District's relationship with the School Resource Officers looks like. What is the relationship with the city look like? What's the relationship with the county look like? And just during my short time in the Hillsborough School District, we've, we've seen the relationship and the role and roles and responsibilities that SROs have in our school district change over a number of times. We probably all remember the Dare t-shirts that officers used to hand out and the program that they, the Dare program that they used to do. Following that, we had the Great Program, and that was during a time in Hillsborough where we were focused on gang resistance. And so that was that program. We've, we entered a time where it was all about relationship building. And then we've entered a time as schools became targets for violence, it really was about how do we harden the target and how do we make schools less accessible to people that are wanting to promote or conduct violence of any type. So we've been through a variety of different iterations. As, as we dealt with the murder of George Floyd and we saw the racial and social unrest incredible movement that transpired after that, it became very clear that we needed to reevaluate our relationship with SROs and make sure that we were doing the best that we possibly could to meet the needs of our students. So we've done a variety of different things. Those includes, that has included some surveys that we've put out. We've put out two different sets of surveys. We weren't, we weren't happy with the first set and the number of participants that we had. So we, we sent that out again and received a lot more feedback this time around. We've also taken, we've, we've received feedback from some of our parent advocacy committees and our advisory committees, and so we've received feedback that way. And we've done some vetting of the MO, of the draft MOU in order to get some feedback. So here's what we've learned as we've talked to our community. There's, there's need for these four things that you see on the screen. There's a need for the clarity, for clarity as to what the roles and responsibilities and what does that relationship look like between our law enforcement, law enforcement and the school district? So there needs to be clarity on that. There needs to be transparency. And when we talk about transparency, really what we're getting out there is how do SROs spend their time? When is it that the district requests their presence? And so what does that look like? And we've found as we've gone through this process that there are many things that the Hillsborough School District has to own in this process. And that is, one of the main ones is consistency. What does those roles and responsibilities look like from school to school? Are officers used, and do our, does our administrative team have a thorough understanding of the appropriate use of school resource officers? And then finally, of course, over and over again, we have people sharing their most interested in having positive relationships with the school resource officers and our students. That's a, that's a reoccurring theme. All right, if you'd adjust one more slide, advance one more slide. We've also, we've, we've been doing some homework and gathering some additional information as well. Morgan and Alex have been working with Georgetown University and they've got, they've got resources that have been made available and, and some consultation that's been taking place for, just for our district to gain a thorough understanding of what, what a top-notch SRO program looks like. We've also dug into what are the recommendations from the National Association of School Resource Officers? And you can see the bullet points here. And, and what we're going to do here is, I won't read these bullet points to you, but you can see that relationships, the selection process, huge, large emphasis on non-law enforcement, and that would help with the relationship building. And Chief Coleman talked a little bit about this, that some of that specialized training that would benefit SROs and making sure that that training also includes implicit bias and racism training. So, so that we can continue to combat that and to fulfill our mission of becoming an anti-racist school district. So I'm going to turn this over to Morgan at this point. And Morgan is going to share with you how we believe that we can not only meet the concerns that have been raised, but we can also work in the recommendations from the National Association of SROs into an MOU that would allow us to move forward and really, really fulfill that next iteration of what we would want the rest, the relationship to look like between law enforcement and the Hillsborough School District. All right, Morgan?
Thank you. So my name is Morgan Quimby and I'm at Tosa with the Hillsborough School District. And thank you for letting me be here today. What we learned and what I just want to reemphasize that Mike had mentioned is that that first slide is really about what we, the feedback we got from our parent committees, from our staff, from our students about what they need and what they're seeking. And then how we are folding that into what the National Association of SROs is saying is best practices when creating an SRO program, that teacher on special assignment, thank you. And what I want to make sure before we go on to the slides where we give some examples of what we've asked for in MOU is that we really are aware that this is a partnership and making sure that we know that, that we don't want this MOU to be a Hillsborough School District is saying this is what we want law enforcement to do, but instead partnership between law enforcement and Hillsborough School District. And so how are we going to do that together? What are our roles and responsibilities together to ensure that we are partnering to best serve our community in schools and out of schools? If you go to the next slide, now I think you're going to skip ahead one more. There we go. Oh, back, sorry. There we go. So clarity. So as we mentioned, we really, a lot of our parents and our students were asking for clarity around what does the SRO do? What's the purpose of the program? And as Mike shared and all of us are aware, we've had a lot of different versions of an SRO program throughout the years and the goals. And so we really wanted to make sure that we had clear goals for the program and not just for each of us individually within it, but as a whole. And so one of the three goals is actually that fostering that positive school climate based on respect for all students and community members. We want to make sure that everybody knows each other by name, strength, and need. And that is a core value of the Hillsborough School District is to ensure that we know our students, our families, and all stakeholders that we support and we interact with by name, by strength, and by need. Reports to each other and to the people that we care for. We want to make sure that our SRO program educates our students, staff, and families on relevant law enforcement topics. So there are a variety of topics that there's different requirements that we have to review, like Aaron's Law, Addie's Act, Suicide Prevention Consent Education. And we want to make sure that we can partner with our law enforcement officers that are in schools to do some of that education. But also really, how do we, how do we take the information that we're delivering to students and make sure that we share that with parents? And so that would be something we would look to law enforcement to support is you have the knowledge, you have the skills, they have the training. How do we make sure that our families are hearing the information that they need and we're, have a consistent message between each organization? And then strengthening the community relationships by creating a safe school environment. And so we know that that is a primary goal of law enforcement. We want to make sure we stick to that. We also want to be creative on how do we support that? So how do we make sure, as was mentioned earlier, Hillsborough School District is what's we an anti-racist organization? So how do we ensure that we are physically, emotionally, and socially protected within the safe school environment as partners with law enforcement? So again, it's that partnership piece and connecting and coordinating efforts to ensure that we're meeting our goals for all stakeholders in a collaborative process and way. Next slide, please. Transparency is another thing, and this is transparency around what's the role like? What do our law enforcement partners do during the day? But also what is our role as far as a school district to provide supports to ensure that, that our law enforcement partners understand what we're doing and how we can support each other? One of the, we're involved in that, that process of selecting the SRO. We do know that, that we do not get final say in who's going to be placed. That would obviously be law enforcement's final say. I don't think that this is something that's new or unique to the system we already have. I believe a lot of times we already have a, a member of our staff, a member of our community on that hiring process. And so this would just be putting that in formal writing that we would have some way to, to be involved and stay connected so that we ensure that the people that are serving in our buildings are connected to the goals that we have set as a school district and that five-year strategic plan and where we're moving as a community. We also are asking that if there's a possibility of having SROs that have college experience, so college degree or college coursework, and the reason for that, even though that's different than what law enforcement has as a standard to become a police officer, the reason is that we're a K-12 institution and we find it important that anybody that works with our kids and volunteers can, can speak to their experience. How did you figure out your career path? What was your options? What was that process of looking at colleges? How did you figure out your, your financial aid and things like that? So having that community partnership with students to build those relationships and think long-term about life opportunities. Want to make sure that we have data for accountability and improvement. So one of the asks is that we would have, SROs would submit monthly reports of what they do. So not the formalized report, but a general like data of, we spent about this many hours this week in classroom presentations. We spent about this many hours a week in our attendance meetings and safety meetings and for our community so that they know what the day in the life of the SRO is like. But also for us that if we have our goals and we know what we want our SRO program to do, is there time in the day to do that? If we're seeing that SROs are responding to 25% of the time, which is not a thing. But if that was, then what could we do as a district to prevent that? What curriculum could we place? What partnerships could we have in the community? How could we support each other to prevent the drug and alcohol issue before the SROs have to respond? So it's accountability for both sides of that partnership to ensure that we're meeting our goals together to support our community. Next slide, please. And then that consistency is Mike Monroe does. So if they're at our middle schools, all of our parents in middle, and in a variety of different ways, some of the ideas we've had around it, we've heard is that SROs don't want to be involved in school discipline and we don't want to be making sure we have that spelled out. And then we train our staff to know that. And so we wouldn't involve our SROs on anything that isn't a criminal matter as far as discipline, behavior related. We also want to make sure that there is some annual training requirements. We're already getting a lot of training. A lot of that was mentioned earlier in the presentation, and so we appreciate hearing that. But making sure that we just spell out that we would like SROs to take a nationally recognized training class or program or working in a juvenile area, so working on, in a school setting. You know, the National Association of SROs has several different levels of content. I believe HPD actually already provides this to their, to their police officers that are in the SRO role. And so we'll be continuing that. Also making sure that our district is providing training and supporting SROs. So ensuring that, that our SROs are very familiar with the systems, support, structures, rules, and identity of our schools and of our districts. And so really spelling out in our MOU what we are as a Hillsborough School District responsible for providing to our SROs to support the goals. One slide, please. And then that positive relationship, and I heard that mentioned by P D earlier. And also again, obviously that's important to us to make sure that we have that positive relationship. And part of that is emphasizing the non-law enforcement role. So one of the things that we're asking is if there's a possibility that our SROs wear a different type of uniform. So we still want them to meet their HPD and Washington County standards. We want to make sure that they're protected and that they're safe. But could they wear a polo shirt like some of their summer? Or I don't know what we call it, like business casual uniforms that we see them in at times. So they still have all of their gear, they still are identifiable, but that way we know that, that who they are and why they're there. That was another ask of our parents too, when we were getting feedback. It's parents don't know when a patrol officer is at a school or when it's an SRO, partly because of the uniform. And so if there was a way to delineate or to be able to, as a parent, I show up and I know that uniform means SRO, this uniform means patrol officer, that helps me as a parent identify who I can seek out to ask questions about the school system or about the school environment. And that person will have some sort of, of connection and knowledge versus a patrol officer that may not. Right? We also talked about a possible name change. We know that our HPD officers are service detectives. So is there any way to lean in a youth service name so that we can really remind people that the whole School Resource Officer Program is to, to serve youth and to support youth? And so really leaning into that name. And then being mindful and very intentional about how we integrate our police officers and SROs into the community. So at times our SROs can be like guest speakers or can just kind of, they, they come and play games but people don't always think of them as part of our school building or our district. We want to change that. We want to make sure that they feel part of our community, that they feel connected, that they are, they're invited to our staff meetings, to our celebrations, to our activities because we want to make sure that this is a strong partnership and it is not just a, a service that's provided, but really working together to create that integration. I believe that is the last slide. There's a lot more to this. We've, we really wanted to make sure that anything that we put in place or anything that we asked for through the MOU was responsive to what we heard from our parents, from our community members, and from our law enforcement partners to ensure that everybody's needs are met, that everybody's asks are getting met and that we're prioritizing kids first. Again, we know that that's what's the intention with our SROs. We know that that's what our goal is for all of us. We're here for students. So just making sure that we, we focus on that when we're making decisions and that we're creating transparency for our community and that our families know what to expect, how to expect it, and how they're going to get communicated to if there's ever an opportunity or time to do that. And that's the end of my presentation.
I think, I think, Mayor, we are ready for the discussion portion of the agenda on this.
That is, excuse me, correct. So, you know, at this point, we'll just kind of throw it out to, to hear your thoughts both as, as board members as well as councilors, just your first take, first blush, questions? If you have questions for either Morgan or your police. Just go ahead and with all the faces on the screen, it's a little hard. So Erica and I will kind of watch to see hands that go up and we'll go ahead and call.
See Kyle.
I see Kyle. I just want to make sure that Lisa isn't up too. All right, go ahead, Kyle.
So I have a quick question. I've had the benefit during COVID times of being able to go and go and watch a lot of the school meetings. So a lot of what was just presented was in their last meeting, which is excellent. I'm curious, has our staff reviewed all of those points that were just presented to us? And do they take any issues with what was just presented or does this seem agreeable?
I can, I can answer that, Kyle. What we did is we met with law enforcement last week and we shared a draft of the MOU with law enforcement. We wanted to make sure that they had the opportunity to react to some of the details that are in there. So they currently have the MOU and they will, and then we'll, we are scheduling a follow-up meeting. either this week or next week. I'm not sure where it's scheduled to see, but we do have a follow up meeting. And so we'll be able to hear any specifics. In terms of the broader scope and the values around it, there's been, there has not been an issue at all. But we also wanted to share the specifics, get some reactions to that, and then we will share that with our board as well.
Chief Coleman, did you want to? I was just going to see if chief wanted to maybe just add anything from the from police perspective on that too.
Yeah, thank you. And I would agree with the superintendent. Part of the reason that Commander Hewson here is with me, he's been involved and you know, the school district's been really helpful and you know, not just drafting something alone and then presenting it to us. They've had our employees involved in it, try and make good decisions. And I would agree with him that the broad philosophies and concepts we're in agreement with, and it's just the technicalities of how certain things would be pulled off frankly, that we just would need to work through. But just as a for instance, we were very open minded about uniforms. There are certain ORS stand and safety standards we have to meet. But there's by no means any inflexibility on discussions like that.
I saw Olivia's hand before.
Yeah, I appreciate definitely what the police department has done as far as making and responding. And what you've described tonight with what Hillsborough School District is has been doing and considering. And I'm I'm going to jump from the 30,000 foot down to the day when the students came to our plaza and explained what they felt. And I would I would like to hear because I've heard everything here tonight supporting why we should have the SROs and what sort of things that you're considering in ways of preparing them and how they can interact with our school. And I want to be mindful of the fact that there's a lot of people in the community who don't trust the police. They simply don't trust the police. So for the small business, we're figuring out a plan of how to engage. And I believe why we're here tonight is to figure out how we can work as partners on making a school experience for students better with the presence of police officers in the school. I'm a principal. I've had to call the cops because a student brought a weapon to school or they had drugs that they brought to school. So I've had to do that. But I've also had an opportunity to really think about, do I make the choice to call the cops? Put the student on the course of getting some mental health services if that's what they need? Start engaging with social workers. And so I I appreciate the SROs and getting training, but that's not what they are. And it'd be, you know, if somebody goes and gets a social work bachelor's degree and wants to apply at Hillsborough School District, it would have some professional background and training in knowing and understanding theories and philosophy about why they would engage with students in the way they would do it. And so I appreciate hearing what it is that you're considering. But I really want to examine what the role of the school resource officer is. The HSD has career pathway development with counselors, teachers, career counselor is there. I don't, I can see that the SRO can give some input in kind of talking about what their pathway was, what their shared experience was, especially if they share the same background ethnicity. But again, is that is that their role they should be doing? And I don't have to answer this tonight. I'm just sharing what it is that's on my mind about this. And, you know, changing their uniforms could be a way to do that, but but they're still cops. And I think I'd like to hear more because even if we did surveys, right? We had people come to our work session, people who came to the Spanish speaking work work session were apprehensive about speaking up at all. So I'd like to know in depth, like if we're going to do this, what do families feel? What do the families who aren't convinced that SRO should be in the schools, whose children they don't want their children to be normalized around the presence of police officers, for example? So I'd like to, hopefully, we get to explore those options of how an SRO presence could be beneficial in the school to all families. Thanks.
That that has been our goal as we've gathered information is to better understand the various feelings that are out there around SROs and their presence in the school. That 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 has been what this information gathering has been all about. We getting into the specifics of the MOU this evening. But I can tell you that when it comes to addressing the concerns that the families have raised, you will see when it when the time is appropriate and we have it more in a final draft type form after our school board has had a chance to look at it after law enforcement has a chance to look at it. You will see that the areas of concern are addressed in in pretty specific ways. So for example, the types of training, making sure that they understand a young adolescent development and make sure they understand about cultural bias and just a myriad of other things. Those will be addressed in there and and that has been our entire goal is to understand the concerns and then to address those.
And I just wanted to add also to Olivia's concern. One of the things that we had to own from our side in our district is that it's exactly what you just talked about about what is the role of administrators and how they decide when to call or when not to call, when to engage them and how they will participate in our district. And that's something that we are looking internally ourselves to do. Just as we're asking the training, we're doing a lot of training of our own staff around biases. We're doing a lot of training also wanting to clarify what is a role and making sure that any new administrator, existing administrators, that there's a there's definitely that that's clarified. And that's around that clarity piece is that a lot of times what we heard back when we had some administrators is we have, this is how they work in our building, but it wasn't consistent in how they were utilized in another building. And so a lot of that conversation is really on us as a district and on how we train our employees and what we are allowing them to utilize the SROs for. So that's part of this is making sure that we have that explicitly mentioned. We don't want to contribute to what we already know is a disproportionate impact on our students of color. But that's something that we have to own ourselves to as at our district. So again, this is definitely something that we're continuing to analyze. And I think in the historically, we haven't really looked at how the program is working or evaluated. And that's part of that transparency and accountability is actually looking at it every year, looking at our data and not only just our our not only just the data that is quantitative that we see those disciplinary, but also our qualitative data. Hearing from our communities, specifically our communities of color and having focused conversations with them and looking at our program and seeing how it's working on an annual basis. So that it's not just one thing that we talk about it now and then forget about it, but that we're actually looking at every year.
Thanks, Erica. We all own that responsibility because a student who came and talked to us, explained what their experience was like in the school district as well as in the city. So that's a shared thing that we have to overcome. Thanks.
For sure. One thing that we talked to Steve is how at the end of the day, both of us serve the same community. It's the same people that are in our district that are in our city. I see Kyle hand is up.
Exactly.
I see Lisa's hand up first.
Yeah, and this this is just to address. Oh, go ahead.
We're gonna say direct.
Thank you. I'm happy to go first. I just wanted to share a few thoughts. Thank you very much, Dr. Allen, for letting me go first. I so just a couple things. First, I appreciate that we're trying to make this be collaborative because I think that we've both been hearing from the community that they want us to address this issue. So I think this is a great step for us to be together and I'm kind of talk some of the details and I really appreciate the work that Morgan has done to kind of hammer out what the feedback means. I would say, you know, we did a, we did two pretty thorough surveys with our community. And the last one that Superintendent Scott spoke about, because we didn't get enough survey responses the first time. We had 2,300 responses survey, which is a significant amount of the secondary school population that we serve in the Hillsborough School District. And overwhelmingly, if you look at that data, parents and students are subro program, which was data that is different. Well, I personally was expecting. I think part of that is because a lot of the parents are elder millennials like like me. We remember, you know, the year we were in high school, Columbine happening, right? We remember that and and that's the age that we were raised in and now we're raising our children in this world. And so that school safety is paramount importance to us. And I think that's but also the students too. So I just, I also want, you know, I work in schools and as midday job as teacher. And I've met more than one student who has shared with me experiences that they have had with abuse or neglect and their relationship that they were able to forge with their school resource officer to make it safer for them forward and more comfortable. I think that's really important and it's a key piece of the SRO's job that we don't give enough attention to. So I just, I wanted to shed a little bit of light on that. And then I also, you know, just want to say again, you know, the generation that I grew up in, we care a lot about school safety. And it wasn't that long ago in Reynolds, which is just a couple of school districts over, where school resource officers actually stopped a school shooting from happening in 2014. And so there's a, you know, it's about our students and it's about their safety and it's about making sure that they are able to have someone advocate for them and identify in addition to the classroom workers and staff, someone who's trained to identify when are they being abused? When are they being neglected? It's critical. And I think that the survey data that we received supports that strongly. And so I'm really happy that we did that survey and we have that data because that tells us exactly what we need to only 13% of the respondents to that survey said that they did not want to have a school resource officer. So I think that's pretty clear what direction we should be going. Thanks.
Thank you. The next two hands I've seen were Counselor Allen and then Director Spro.
So actually I'm going to wait. So I'll let another person speak. Thank you.
I think that's me. Olivia, thank you for bringing that up. I do think it's important that we recognize the school to prison pipeline and how what our responsibility is with the SRO relationship to lessen that. I think that's really important and I think that goes directly to the role of the SROs. I would be interested in, I'm going to have to go look that up, the the data from the community survey. I know the data from our survey. I have to say, I was a little disappointed in the number of responses we had. I wish we had had more. And I wish we had heard from members of the community that we don't normally hear from because that's who I really want to hear from or the people that are the quietest, I think, is the best way to put that. Well, I'll just leave it at that. So yeah, I'm going to, I'm curious to know more about the survey results and how we can maybe increase community response and and get those stories that I think we all want to hear about.
And I think that's one of the, one of the things that we would also talking about is really looking when we're talking about that reviewing of an annual is not only hearing from people who, you know, have really great experiences and it's all good, but also from the people that haven't had so good experiences and also from people that actually have maybe interactions with, you know, our SROs and circling back to our families and checking in with them and saying, how was it? How did everything go? And then just getting that input from them and learning from that. I see Morgan, you had also. I see your hand, Morgan, and then I'll go to Yedira.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that in addition to the student surveys, we've also done focus groups. So we really wanted to make sure that we did hear the voices of our marginalized communities and those communities we may not have heard from in the past. So we put together several different people that had partnerships with communities and families. So we had groups that worked with our Latinx PAC and our Black Family Village PAC. And we reached out to them to get feedback from them around their perspective. So with partners that they were already close to and already had that trusting relationship with. And then we also shared the similar slideshow with most of those groups. I'm actually presenting to the Latinx PAC tomorrow night to get more feedback and to make sure that we're responding to their needs and that we are aware of their concerns. So in addition, I just wanted to make sure we're aware that in addition to the surveys, we also have had focus groups and direct outreach and interaction. But as Erica mentioned, I think this is also part of that continuous improvement. So if we do choose to continue our partnership and continue to have the SRO program, then as we are strengthening our relationships and as we are intentionally building those relationships and ensuring that our families, like they have a voice and know they have a voice. I believe and I hope that we will continue to get more and more feedback and that more people feel comfortable. And we won't have that the same need to to push in to different communities and really kind of pull out that feedback, but really creating an environment where people are ready, willing to say, hey, 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 I got an opinion and I'm going to share it because I have a safe place and I trust you to respond to my needs. And so that's an environment we're creating and we're hoping that that as if we continue this partnership, that that is something that we can do together. So that we ensure that our families all have a voice and know that they have a voice and know that we're ready to respond to their voices and their needs.
Yedira.
Hi, Chief Coleman. Thank you for the updates on what the police department is doing considering what's going on right now. But I just have the kind of comments, questions. What partnerships specifically with organizations that have culturally specific organizations that have relationships with historically marginalized communities? What partnership does HPD have? And then also, so transparency and accountability is one of the main things that we heard from back from parents. So is part of the changes making, for example, a citizen placing a complaint made any easier? Like how how has that process been looked at and how easily is it for for citizens to 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 give their concerns? And then also to get feedback or some type of response to to their concerns?
Yeah, so our our team of officers who are our team with the officer and our community enhancement a team member have been out in the field for about six weeks. So they are developing some of those relationships, but they are, for instance, are trying to reestablish a Latino advisory committee that went dormant in the police department. Connections with folks that were members of that for new members. They're not from zero. There's a lot of relationships that are have been built there over the years. We we work closely with the Chamber of Commerce. They have a liaison to minority owned businesses that we we work pretty closely with. But we, part of our development of these connections is to, as I mentioned before, we have trainings, meetings to discuss strategy where this community and officer dual training together is where we can reach out to those organizations and start to re either partnerships and or just really from the ground up, build just a first name basis interaction with them and and build interaction with them and, and build, build small. It's really as beginning as a grassroots option, build small and build up smart. Really the, the idea is to listen to how best we could do that. You know, one thing that we've tried to be really cognizant of is police departments in the past have really kind of decided before they got, before they struck out, that this is the way it will look. And I've just asked, did that be inverted? And that this team and, you know, all the members of the police department, including the commander who's over community outreach is, is to invert that and ask folks how best would, could we build it that it would work for you? Not to take too much time, but as a, for instance, you know, one of the initial feedback items we got is, you know, you've got to understand that a lot of people work during the day and a lot of people have children. And, you know, these meetings need to happen at non-traditional times if you really want to talk to members of the community that you haven't talked to before or that have certain jobs in certain sectors. So it's, it's very much infancy, but we're trying to build it smart. We do, you know, at the police department, we do accept all complaints. We're ahead of the curve, particularly on bias complaints because we exceed the state standard on how to receive bias complaints. You have to have a mechanism in place. We've created an online mechanism. And with the help from our technology folks in the city, we also allow that, you know, one of the, one of the challenges that we didn't realize in the beginning is we like to allow people to be anonymous if they wish to be. That's very difficult online to kind of erase that, that electronic signature. But we've worked hard with our IAS people to accommodate online anonymous complaints. We do follow up when we reach conclusions on complaints with those folks that, that file them. But we are looking to take steps, the next steps and how to be more transparent about how many complaints we receive, how they're resolved, the categories they fall into. We, we still work in a state where officers have a bill of rights. So transparency is on a gradient, but those things that we can to and give, give the public some sort of idea in, if you will, our job performance. And those areas are areas we are, you know, trying to expand into and.
This issue warrants sustained focus from the city council, the chief of police, the superintendent and the board of directors. I think maybe it slipped off our collective radar and I'm very glad to see that this group is, is really doing a deep dive on this issue. I think that's what the community wants us to do. Chief Coleman, I was really impressed with your speaking to community engagement. And I know the council and the, the city manager are on board, but I was particularly pleased to hear you give voice to that. The nature of the SRO program really offers you a unique level of community engagement. Unlike other police encounters that are somewhat transactional or brief, the opportunity to engage with the community through the SR program is, is profound. SROs get to know whole families. They get to know parents. They get to know staff, really what makes them tick. And so the opportunity to engage with the committee through the SRO program is really, really, really profound. For our part, HSD is able to do difficult things and do them well. And I feel like we're approaching this in a similar vein that we approached comprehensive sexuality, which was a hot button with the community. We sought engagement. We were very transparent and inclusive in how we went about that. And we, we achieved an outcome that I think we're all very, very, very satisfied with. I think the SRO is kind of in the same vein where we have to be very deliberate and very thoughtful and purposeful and really get to where we, we need to be on this program. Counselor, I'll care to your point. For me personally, everything is on the table. I'm wide open in terms of what collectively we decide we want to do. And I think Superintendent Scott mentioned that when he talked about, on the one hand, we're talking about what is a world-class SRO program really look like? What are the components of that? On the other hand, is it still a good fit with the Hillsboro School District? I think both of those are, are still in play very, very much. And just what motivates me to take a wide, 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 fresh look at this is we have eighty-six point two four percent of our students graduate on time, which in Oregon is a really good number. But on the flip side, that means that thirteen point eight percent of our, our students aren't graduating. And I'm always asking myself, what are we doing structurally that is, is maybe a barrier to those thirteen point eight percent? Then it occurs to me that maybe despite everybody's best efforts, the SRO program is maybe a barrier. I don't know that. I don't, I'm not asserting that, but it's a question in the back of my mind as I, as we undertake a really, really deep dive into that. Is there some.
And said, and the steps that he's taking and very deliberate and the, and the approach he's taking. It's having a positive impact because they're working collaboratively with the small businesses. So I think this is what we have to do is work more collaboratively with those families who are not engaging, who are fearful of the police and the presence of police in schools. I'm not saying to take them completely out, but I just wanted to share a little bit about who the demographics and we're talking about. Hill High and Glencoe with the highest populations and Sentry of who those student populations are. So trust is very important.
Thank you, Counselor. Director, Executive Director, Sinapi, excuse me.
Oh, Mr. Callaway, he was my mentor. Good evening, everybody. Executive Director of Schools, and I'm not kidding, he was when I first started as a principal. I just wanted to speak on just a couple of things. Part of the role I've been in this year is working directly with our Executive Director of Equity, our Director of Equity, and the both of us have been working with moving our work forward in the school district and have done a lot of targeted groups, really trying to get the voices of what would, what, what we would perceive to be marginalized community members who haven't, whose voices haven't always been heard. And so we have several things that have taken place that we've been able to gather information, which is includes the formation of a PAC called the Black Village, which is represented from black African American and African family members, and they've actually come to the board and spoke with them recently. We also have different family engagement groups, including the Asian Pacific Islander Group with Connor and I and Andrea Neville helped facilitate. So on a parent parental level, we have had several groups that have been talking and in, and getting the information from our parents. On a teacher level, we also have affinity groups set up for teachers of color. And we meet on a monthly basis that as well as administrators of color so that we can hear their input and their voice on SROs in the school. And then in addition, just our students, Mike and I have been met with a series of, there was a series of meetings that took place that we met with high school students, students of color and white students in our school district. And so I just wanted to address that, that we have, even though the reflection of the survey wasn't truly as high as we wanted. It was pretty high and hearing those voices of our families, hearing the voices of our students, the, the people we directly serve is how we were able to arrive on this clarity on the building the relationships with the SROs. That being said, I, I do think in a, like Ms. Al, am I saying it right, Olivia? Al Care? Al Car? Okay. Mentioned it's that community engagement and that partnership. As a woman of color, but also as a person who was raised with a father who was a police officer and a mother who worked for LAPD for thirty-eight years, I understand and I respect the police department and I understand the role that they play. That being said, our collaboration has to be in sync with each other in order to change the narrative. The narrative for some of our students out there isn't one that's positive, exactly what Olivia was talking about. However, we have a huge opportunity to change that narrative and it can start with our SROs. So that's, that's just my two cents. I, I wanted to give the perspective that there have been a lot more voices that have been heard that aren't necessarily reflected in the amount of surveys we're, we're talking about, but were collected in another manner, which was more personal and more connected.
Staff really appreciative, also really grateful of the presentations on both the school district and the HPD side, both really great. I have a couple of questions that are scattered through, so I'm kind of flipping up some stuff. One of the, one of the things that I heard, and I want to say Martin or Commissioner Granum, are you all commissioners? Chair, Board?
Directors.
Director, thank you. I apologize for that. Director Granum, I appreciate you bringing up the fact that, you know, SROs as a whole are something we're trying to optimize as a program, but we're also trying to figure out, is that the best choice for schools? I think that was going to be the first place I start where just the, the initial point for both the school district and for, and for, and for Hillsboro was to say, hey, we have this program. Now how can we make it better? Not, is this the best way to serve? I think that's kind of the first part, place I start with is I think we as Hillsboro also needs to figure, need to figure out what do we want to accomplish with this? You know, if I'm not mistaken, the initial SRO program was to create a positive relationship between police officers and students. There's something like that in the mission statement. Obviously, as everyone says, it's grown and changed over time. I think we need to figure out what that is. I'm going to say for me personally, I think about it as trying to improve outcomes for increased livability and equity in our community. I also stay in our schools so that we are still supporting our schools. And that's really important to me because in this conversation, one of the things that has been emphasized over and over and over again about school resource officers is that you want to emphasize the non-law enforcement officer aspects of their job. Why that's important to me is because the basis of these folks right now are police officers. That shows me that there is a difference between who these people are and what we want them to do. That's not necessarily a bad thing, but it is in this situation. It, it can be in this situation because we're saying that we want someone to fill a job that they aren't the most qualified for, or a better worded, there are people who could potentially be more qualified. I think that's a really important point to start here is that, you know, even if we go to the National Association of School Resource Officers, they have a triad of school-based pleasing. Two of the three legs of that triad have nothing to do with law enforcement. It's education, informal counselor, you know, a teacher and an informal counselor. Well, if we're talking about two thirds of a job potentially being things that aren't on law enforcement, I think it's really important that we have that conversation. I'm not necessarily advocating that we take all school resource officers out. I really appreciate the survey work that those, the school district did because it showed that even in disaggregated data, even when looking at responses by race, it did show that there was broad support across the community for school resource officers being in schools. I really appreciate the steps we've gone forward about clarifying roles, making sure that everyone can understand. But at the root of it, what we're saying is, I've been trying to come up with a metaphor and I know some of, I know at least Robbie I've talked to about this. It's, it's like trying to hammer in a screw. You know, there's a better tool for that job, but we're still using a hammer. And that's where we can get the job done, but I think we need to figure out what the best, what the best tool to accomplish our goal is. And if our goal is education and counseling, I, with all due respect to the school resource officers we have and the great jobs that they do, I don't know if that's the best place for those folks to be or the best, the best background for those folks to come from. And so that, that's really the highest level of kind of policy thought I have on this is that I want to try and figure out how we can best use those resources to still accomplish the same goals, to still have that same level of crime prevention, to have the same relationship with law enforcement officers. But to say that if the jobs that these folks are doing aren't consistent with their backgrounds, then we might need to choose different people. We might need to have a better tool to optimize how we're serving our community. That's really the root of what I see this. I see this as best using our public press, our public dollars that we have and trying to find the best possible use to achieve the best possible outcome. In this case, I, I'm, I'm still skeptical that this is the best way to use our funds. So that's kind of my high level thought. I also had two questions for Chief Coleman. In the PowerPoint, you had said that the HSD and HPD partnership reduces arrests and referrals for the juvenile justice system and reduces response time to crime and crimes and disturbances. And this gets back to what I had been talking about. It, it's a pretty clear theme in here of consistency, transparency. But what data do we have to show those outcomes? I, I know that when we.
And there are a lot of very smart protections about how we analyze that data and how we look at the ultimate results of it. We, we, we have a very low, as it's a physical arrest rate, six people in the last three years. Very low for violent situations. So it's very, very rare that that happens. We do, we do track those like we would any kind of time that we have, you know, a physical interaction with somebody. The, the reference to response times is with school resource officers, there are multiple ways for school administrators to contact them. So they don't have to go through the traditional police dispatch system, which not only adds additional time to the call response, but also prioritizes calls. So you, you know, a call that maybe in the big scheme of things of everything that's happening at a moment in time in Hillsboro wouldn't be very important. We can get a school resource officer there that much more quickly. And of course, for the more serious things, we, we have multiple ways of getting officers. They work in teams. It's not always individuals. And the idea there is to do those things such as de-escalation and, you know, interdiction before maybe a crime has occurred. Or just, you know, where speed is not only a safety thing, but it can maybe have, keep something from becoming a disturb, from going from a disturbance to a crime. I would say that the, you know, one thing that would be near impossible to quantify, but I think is really important to both your comments, Counselor, and then Counselor Al Care and some of the directors is, I think Counselor Al Care mentioned earlier that sometimes she's faced with a decision between, should I call the cops or not? I think that's a really important aspect of school resource officers is that I can't quantify how many times the school administrator has been able to call somebody they know on a first name basis and say, hey, I've the record. It's what I've got and I'm not really sure what I should do here. And I think things such as the arrest data bear out that, you know, many times, if not even, you know, I'd be careful to say more often than not, because as I said, we can't track every stat. But the decision is no, I'm here to help, but this, this is not a crime or we can deal with this in a different way. We can stop this from happening, whatever the case may be. And I think that's where the, it's that ability to consult with somebody without starting all the mechanisms of law enforcement that you would if you had to rely on something like a patrol response is where a lot of the work between the lines gets done and where the, I would, I think your analogy of the stool is perfect. I, I understand it. And I, I think maybe it's a, in my mind, it poses another, it poses a different question as the clarity is. You know, I would imagine that the school district would love to have more counselors and, and things like that. It's always been my understanding that those kind of additional responsibilities around the school resource officers is to help build that resource officer into a more multi-dimensional element within the school. It's not for necessarily the lack of resources and they're filling a hole, but it's more making them a more complete component of the school environment.
Thank you, Chief. And we have a list of next people to speak. I did want to just, back to your question, Anthony, also about the right to, I think one thing also that our partners at the city can do is, and I look at this as, I think maybe three months ago, we had a presentation or maybe two months ago now. Time is really difficult to keep track of nowadays. But we had a presentation from our library, which is really great to see how they took, they looked at what our goals were of our strategic plan and our district achieve in regards to our reading and they created that program for a library card for use. And so I see that as a great example of a partnership with the city where they looked at what is it that the district needs and how can we serve them or help them? And then provided the right tool in that, you know, program area to do that. I think that the other thing back to your feedback around the data is that we know that there is a lot of data that talks about students participating in extracurricular activities and sports. And there's a lot of overlap in what services city provides that can also help our district. It's no secret that education in Oregon. It's no secret that education in Oregon is not funded to keep with our current service level. So I just want to put that out to you all to kind of put your creative thinking caps on and 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 see where are there areas that our students in our community really need support and help and the resources that the city can provide in that space, whether it's, you know, scholarships to participate in activities that normally cost money or or just thinking about those ways that we can also look for the right tools to serve our students. And so with that, I'll, I'll hand it off to Jackie after, but I know Maya and Devlin are here. And for our student representatives, this is a pretty intimidating group of adults to be in here. And I just want to make sure that, as always, we are centering our conversation around what's best for our students and what our students' perspectives, their voices, we are bringing them to the table. So I just want to, after Jackie's question, Maya and Devlin, I want to give you the opportunity to just provide any feedback or any opinions that you may have in this space. So go ahead, Jackie.
Chief Coleman, thank you for being here and answering your questions. One of the questions that comes to my mind is, what, what is your force doing to diversify your force?
Yeah, well, it's, it's actually despite, you know, the, you know, my fears several months ago about the ability to attract quality candidates to the police department. We've actually had an overwhelming number of candidates reach out to us, particularly officers with experience and officers from, you know, we are, we are in the middle of a hiring process, but it feels as the, because so I, you know, they haven't, some of them haven't passed background and things like that. But it feels like our most diverse candidate pool perhaps ever at the strikes across several categories. But as I've mentioned before to our council, any one of those candidates would stand out on their own regardless of, they're not filling, you know, specific roles. They'd stand out on their own as far as their career accomplishments. And, you know, I always, I want to, I always hesitate because I feel like I'm going to jinx myself, but our department has the kind of reputation right now that's attracting high-quality candidates that want to work in a particular community and and police department environment that, that suits what, that suits why they got into police work. So we, we have the, you know, in many ways, the pick of some, the cream of the crop. And so I think the most, you know, we certainly do traditional things. We, we reach out to college job fairs, we advertise in, in, in multiple languages. We're on national websites for recruitment. But what really has proven to be our best recruiting tool is our reputation. And the reputation of Hillsborough as a place to, to work and live. I know that sounds a little bit like a pitch, but you set it up for me, thank you. And it really is, it really is one of the most joyful things about my job right now is to see who wants to come and work here. And I, we, we're usually pretty good about, you know, welcoming new folks into our police department and putting their pictures and a little bio on our community, on our community outreach efforts. So I'll leave it in some ways for people to to kind of look at that and draw their own conclusions as to how well we're doing. I, but I do report numbers annually, so I'm, I'm feeling very hopeful this year.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Jackie and Chief. Let's go with Devlin and then Maya, if you have any comments.
So as, I'm sorry, I just have a quick question as far as, I don't really have anything as far as questions on stuff that was brought up during the presentations. I do have some personal experience that I could bring up, if that's alright.
Your time, yes.
Okay, um, sorry, I'm a little, this is a, this is kind of scary if I'm being honest. So as I have some personal experience, or well, I have some things that I kind of would like to go over, just personal experience that, you know, I've, things that I've seen, the things that I've heard with school resource officers and some things that I would personally like to see school resource officers, like the kind of influence I want them to be for students in the Hillsborough School District. As far as things that I've seen, if I'm being completely honest, I haven't really had that much experience and I, I kind of, I need to explain this a little bit, but essentially, we, I know for a fact that we do have a school resource officer at Liberty High School. But if I'm being completely honest, I haven't really seen that mu, I haven't seen them do all that much. I'm being honest, generally, the most that I've seen is them standing out in the halls. But and like, you know, watching students pass by, make sure that, you know, everything's in order there, but that's generally all that I see. And I think that school resource officers should kind of, if we were in health class, for example, if we're doing a drug prevention unit, I think that that would be a perfect place for somebody like a school resource officer to come in and be a good influence, like, you know, talk about stuff like that. Or, you know, be a good influence for students who maybe don't have a safe adult to talk to. I think that's something that, personally, that's what I think that school resource officers should be, but that's something that I really haven't been seeing. But at the same time, we, I actually had the opportunity to sit in on a, a student group about SROs with Superintendent Mike. We, and I had, there was one student there and he was talking about how, you know, the school resource officer there had helped him and helped keep him out of trouble by, you know, kind of scaring him straight, I guess. I don't really know exactly how he put it, but he said that the school resource officer was, in short, a very good influence on him and helped keep him out of trouble. And I feel like that, that's something, the quality of what exactly is going on is something that kind of varies in between school resource officers. And I honestly, I'd just like to point out right now that I don't entirely know exactly what the school resource officer is doing at our high school. For all I know, they could be doing all sorts of really amazing things and I just haven't been seeing it. But just from what I've seen, I haven't really seen all that much. And as far as what I would like school resource officers to be, I would like school resource officers to be a, at least a safe adult to talk to, because I had, you know, I have people like that in my life and there are some people that don't have a safe adult to talk to that maybe isn't their parents. And I feel like that's something that, in general, it should be somebody that you can look up to, somebody that you can talk to, I guess. Just somebody that's a good influence. And I don't really know how to, but those are just my thoughts and my experiences on school resource officers, I guess.
Thank you, Devlin. And Maya?
I'm just going to be looking down because I wrote down some of my thoughts on my paper. But I think it is important for school to feel safe for every and all students, or for all and every, I'm sorry, for every student. And I just appreciate the work the SROs have done. But we also need to have these conversations in order to ensure that all students feel safe at school. So I just appreciate that we are even having these conversations. Because I think that, yeah, the idea of policing definitely has changed. And it needs to change in schools as well.
Thank you, Maya. And then we have Mark and Kyle.
Thanks for the time, everybody. I appreciate us going late and you guys sticking with us. I know you have work to do after this, so appreciate that. I'm looking forward to when, at the appropriate time, having your feedback from the MOU draft. That's, that's what I'm really looking forward to. I want to hear sort of your perspective on that. And, and one of the things, you know, I, Chief Coleman, sort of recognizing how the national dialogue is influencing the local conversations that we're having. And so, sort of with that in mind, you know, it's been important to me throughout this process to, to ensure that as we're thinking as a district about how we want the SRO program to look to make sure that that intersects with how you guys might be trying to re-envision 21st century policing. So I think there's a lot of transition and change happening. So one of the things I'm curious about is, you know, what your feedback to the annual review is going to be? Because I, I would like to see us, you know, not have something so set in stone that's intractable and we can't change as, as your force evolves, as our needs evolve. I'd like to be able to continue to, you know, somebody's going to replace me on the school board someday and hopefully we'll have a systemic structure in place that allows the collaborative work that we're doing now to continue. So that, that's, I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, as you guys re-envision which, what 21st century policing looks like to you, that we have a way to incorporate those changes that you're making in our, in our school district. Any program that would want support would sort of have that. And so, so sort of with the, with that systemic thing in mind, I, the, the sort of second point is I hear frequently about these off-the-record conversations administrators have with the SRO officers and how productive that is and how valuable that is. And I understand that, but I also have a little bit of a concern about one of the pillars of our systemic infrastructure being off-the-record conversations. And I don't know how to accommodate that. I'm just putting it out there as a concern I have. And, and thanks again for, you know, being willing to take the time to chat with us.
Thanks, Mark. Kyle?
Excellent, thank you. So I guess the first thing I would say is just, there's been some conversation about resources. And I think Chair Lopez, you know, brought up how schools are underfunded. And I think we should all acknowledge that they absolutely are. The structure of funding in Oregon, it, it comes from the state level, combination of income taxes and property taxes. It comes down to them and it's simply not enough. And I would really encourage the district to, to go out for a levy to not only hire teachers, but also hire these other resources that are, you know, the community is showing that they need. For us, we did that. We went out, we did a local option levy for our school resource officers. They were highlighted in our levy, I think about two years ago, it passed with 82% of the, the community supporting it, it was the highest number we ever got. So I think this community is ready to support that effort. And I think that really we need to organize and we need to move in that direction. One of the things that I think is really important when we talk about folks not being included enough in this conversation are the victims, right? The, the school resource officer, the O in, in that is officer, and they are doing actual police work. That's why they're coming from our police department. In the data that we have, this was sent to you, Counselor Martin, on June 29th. It shows over the last two years, more than 1,000 cases that our school resource officers worked on of the 20,000 kids that are enrolled in, in the Hillsborough School District. And often, and I'll take some responsibility for this, we don't talk about that work that they do, frankly, because it's not pretty, right? These are victims of child abuse, of child neglect. You know, 375 of those cases fit into that realm. The rest of the cases primarily were student-on-student sexual assault, serious physical fighting, often with weapons and weapon threats against the school. This is work for police officers, okay? So they're there to serve that role and we're not doing that work. They can do that work more effectively by building relationships with, with kids, right? That's why they're going and they're educating kids in the classroom. That's why they're there at the, the, eating lunch with kids whenever they can. I needed to see that, that Morgan Quinby was here because in your last meeting, she spoke about her experience as a teacher. I think it was at Glenn Co. And every year, the school resource officer would come in and they would teach a class on identifying, you know, basically sexual assault and, and, you know, safe and appropriate relationships. And she said, every single year after that, kids would come forward and they, they would, they would identify themselves as being a victim to that school resource officer. And that school resource officer, in some cases, would go all the way and, and sit with that victim in court. Okay, so these thousand kids that I'm talking about are very important. And I feel like they are also being underrepresented in this conversation. And, and I understand that we can't identify them, but there is important police work on the other side of this. It's not just about mentoring and counseling. So I just thought it was really important that we make that point.
Thank you, Kyle. Chief, I don't know if you wanted to answer something before and I might have seen you start.
Oh, I just want to make sure, you know, trying to make sure that I answer any questions and thank you, Erica, that might have been posed and then any question in my mind that was, just sometimes it's just a statement rather than a question. But, yeah, we, we, we certainly are interested in the transparency mechanism and the accountability mechanism that the superintendent has mentioned. And I think it's a, you know, it, it is important that, and some of the students mentioned too, Maya and Devon, that we can have hopes as to what will happen, but we also, you know, need to trust and verify that we're in, in line with what the goals are of what we, and that the, the will of the groups that are charged with oversight of this is being met through the things that we put in place. I, I feel like to answer a question about, are the things that we're doing related to policing in the last six months? How, how might they be reflected in how our school resource officers do their jobs? I really do think that, you know, we will see that reflected. It may take time, but it's the type of person that gets into the police work and the type of person that wants to be a resource officer. These are people that have an attraction to education and, you know, they want to be a positive influence. So I, I think we will see it there and we just demand more police officers. I, I'd like to think we've done it here for quite a while, but the bar is just continually being raised and we demand more of them. You know, we demand what you might call the soft skills. We demand the deliberation before you just, you know, there's a difference between can you make an arrest and should you make an arrest? And that, and there's a lot of, I really appreciate what Counselor Martin said about victims. It's not only servicing victims, it's making sure that victim, we, you know, we make sure that victim has a voice and what they want to see transpire. Sometimes they're extremely forgiving and if, and if we have latitude in that arena, we can certainly accommodate it. And we want officers to think deliberatively that way. And other times, you know, unfortunately, it's a much more serious circumstance. But hopefully I covered a few of the questions there.
Thank you, Chief. I see, I do see a comment from Shan. And before I call on you, Shan, I also just wanted to acknowledge and thank all of you for just participating. I think one of the biggest challenges in why I think a lot of agencies struggle with making systemic changes is there, there really isn't even a conversation that starts. And I just want to acknowledge all of our, our directors, our counselors and our staff that are here and having these very difficult conversations. And the fact that you're here and you're talking means that our community can make, can benefit from the improvements that come out of these conversations. And it's going to be, and this is what I always tell my board members when we're doing a lot of this work in our board session is, this work is really awkward, it's really messy. And if it isn't all of those things, then you're not doing it right. So expect to have that discomfort and expect to have these conversations. And so I just want to thank you all for being engaged and for participating and for ensuring that you're, you're making sure that your thoughts and, and concerns are being heard. So Shan, I'm going to call on you.
Thank you, Chair Lopez from Mayor Callaway. So I have a couple of comments and then a question at the very end. You know, I want to start by saying, I think that we, this is just an opportune time. I think it, it took a very unfortunate event like the murder of George Floyd for us to spark these conversations to happen at a larger scale. But I think that it's, it's very needed, especially considering I know that in Hillsborough, we used to have a policy around what SROs did, but I know that that, you know, in the most recent years has kind of gone away. And so in terms of what the purpose of the SRO program is, has really been a giant question mark. And I think that in some of the survey responses that we've got, that was seen from administrators, from parents, from teachers, where it was a little bit unclear as to what an SRO does and what the presence of an SRO means. And so that for us to provide a lot of, a little bit of clarity around, do we still want an SRO program? And if so, what are the primary functions that we see, especially in serving our students and our marginalized students? And so I think that I, I agree with what, you know, what Chair Lopez has said about us needing this partnership. you know, what Chair Lopez has said about us meeting this partnership and us having these dialogues at a much larger scale. And so I appreciate just the intentionality that I think our, our district has been taking, as well as the city at large and the county. The question that I have is, I'm not sure if this would be for Chief Coleman or for Morgan, but it's around the selection of SRO officers and who would serve as an SRO in our school district. The way I understand it is that there are police officers that identify whether or not they want to be a part of an SRO program. And they go through kind of a selection process, and there's a kind of a matchmaking process as to who gets to serve as an SRO in schools. Is there any way that district personnel would be able to sit on that selection committee or be involved in the process of which SROs actually get to be placed in certain schools?
Yeah, I can start if Morgan wants to catch anything that, you know, maybe they're working on in the MOU or something I might miss. We do involve the school district personnel currently in our selection process. As a matter of fact, our most recent one, we selected the, the new sergeant for the program, and two members of HSD were there as part of that selection process. So we find it valuable, you, you know, they, they certainly know what the more well-rounded candidate looks like and, and takes off some of those skills, because we always are going to have our own biases as to, you know, how we view that officer and what their performance has been here. And, you know, frankly, we, I, I think, you know, we need our, we need that blind spot filled into maybe somebody who, frankly, you know, sometimes people who aren't the greatest patrol officers are fantastic school resource officers and vice versa. So that is currently how we do it. I think we, one of the more exciting ideas that I have heard discussed, and perhaps Morgan can fill more in on this, is having student involvement at some degree. So, yeah, we, we have, they, these are positions that get paid, especially paid, because they have a higher level of training and expertise and that. So there are mechanisms, as I mentioned before, that would have to be satisfied on a fairness level and a labor level here. But I think we're in that arena, and we'd like to even expand it, I think is what my message would be.
Thank you.
And thank you for asking that question, because that is something that's come up in a variety of conversations with families, too, is that transparency and that involvement, so that there's understanding of what the hiring process and that selection process is. And then from a staff member or students, if that's possibilities, we know there's some labor stuff to be mindful of, but that transparency of what the hiring process is, and then having a voice and who's selected to be at the school that I go to or that I am a part of. And so we would like to formalize that in the MOU if that's possible.
Thank you. Thank you, Morgan. Thank you, Chief. I don't see any other hands up, a hands up, Mayor.
I see Counselor, I see Counselor Alcare.
Oh, there you go.
Here's what I'd like to say about the collaboration that we have and whatever decisions that we make, is I, I am, you know, I don't, I'm glad those students came to the Plaza. I'm glad that they said what they had to say. Because if they hadn't have said that, this wouldn't be happening, and we wouldn't be talking about the change. So what they experienced in the school district and what they experienced in the city were similar. I would like, you know, whatever we come up with, that we can turn that around, so that there's a positive experience for them in school. So there's their positive experience out in the city, where they're not going to be targeted or treated, profiled, or any of those things. I'm just saying that that's what my hope is from this. I'm not saying that that's what is happening, but I'm saying that's what my hope.
Thank you, Olivia.
Assistant Superintendent Ryman.
Thank you. Sorry, I, there's one part of the conversation that didn't come up, and I'll be regretting it if it doesn't. I, I try to think about if I were visiting our community and addressing the concept of policing with students. We have 1,000 kids in our district who identify as Black or African-American or African or multiracial and Black. And the smaller portion of our community than other demographic groups. But if you were from another community, you'd be right to ask, how could you move forward with this plan without the support of your Black community? And we were real deliberate about engaging that conversation. And I want to tell you, I can't speak on behalf of our Black community, but I was part of three meetings that I thought were important. The first was our Black Village Family Advisory Committee, when Sergeant O came and talked about our survey and encouraged parents to fill out the survey and engage in that process. Also talked about the question of SROs in our community. And then came back a month later with Morgan Quimby and shared data from that survey. And we're transparent about the disaggregated data by race in the survey. And then shared the ideas that were coming together for the MOU, and had a dialogue about that with each other, took notes. And then they came to a board meeting and talked to our school board face-to-face about their recommendations as they showed up in that MOU, and talked about their general support for the MOU, despite experiences that members of the Black and African-American community have had, that have been negative regarding policing in real life. I just want to throw that out there, because I, I would hate for those voices to not show up here tonight, and for anybody to be asked, how are you engaging your African-American community, and not have an answer to that. Engagement ends now, and I would encourage the group to talk about how to engage with our Black community on into the future. I'm happy to support that. Thanks for the conversation tonight.
I, I had one, one more comment, if that's okay, Mayor.
Perfect. And then we'll go, then we'll go to Ms. Pitzer.
I just, just in regards to, you know, we've, we've talked heavily about the SRO program, it makes complete and total sense. But one of the things I, I would, I would ask that we do as a city is try and do some amount of an alternatives analysis, looking at what other ways we can provide these services and whether or not this is, school resource officers are the best, best method. So that's something that I, I, I would like to see from, from, I know I'm one of many, so I'm not demanding it, but it's something I'd like to see on, on the side of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent Spitzer.
And I deal with Spitzer Assistant Superintendent Schools. I just appreciated Travis's comment about working with our families of students who identify as Black, African-American. And I just am really thankful for the layers of information and feedback that we have received. And I know, Ms. Alclair, you had talked about student voices and just hearing those. And we were really challenged in our first survey, it was in the summer, and we didn't get very many students. And Devlin really challenged us to go and get more student voices. And I think it's just really important that we continue to lean on the experiences of our kids. And we have had many students say, I haven't had a good experience with police, or I'm not represented by the police. And we heard parents say that, too. They were definitely grieving the loss of the involvement of Officer Castro after he left. And I'm excited to hear about the work to diversify our workforce that supports our schools in the SRO role. But I, I think like we have a lot of really good information, and I believe that if the board so chooses and we're able to create an MOU with some clarity, that has been the overarching voice of everyone. We need to be really clear on what SROs do, what they're expected to do at all layers. Everybody needs to be really, really clear and what they can expect. And I know, from the beginning, Erica Lopez has asked us through the board, whatever we decide to do, let's revisit it in a year. And I, and I think I'm, I, I see that over and over, the need to do that. And I'm just really thankful for the conversation and for everybody bringing their perspectives, because as Kyle had shared, we, we do have students who have some needs. Unfortunately, we do have issues of abuse and other issues that those relationships really matter. And even in this time of COVID, we've had students reach out to principals saying, how do I get a hold of the SRO? I need a resource, I need to talk to people that can support me. And so it's not perfect, but I think it takes our whole community. And I'm just really thankful for the multiple layers of conversation that we're having here in Hillsborough, as we make good choices for supporting our community and our students and our school.
Thank you. You know, I recognize that my experience with SROs are very unique to my role as a principal, and also as a white male. And, you know, Olivia, as you talked about the, the youth in the Plaza, and that was a, that was a very eye-opening thing for me to hear, because clearly their experiences were, were very different than mine. And, you know, I can give story after story, example after example of how really SROs made a critical difference in the culture, positive difference in the culture of a school, in a student's life, in supporting, you know, families and, and teachers. But, you know, what I've heard is that there is room for improvement, room for growth. And, and Erica, you mentioned that you own that, and we do too. We own it together. And so this has been a wonderful conversation and a wonderful work session tonight. And I would say enhanced, because Maya and Devlin, your participation as well. So I look forward to seeing what the MOU looks like. And I thank you, Chief and Lieutenant, for being here tonight to hear, you know, what we had to say. I am proud of our city, I'm proud of our school district, and I am proud, you know, of, of our efforts and our work together, and am looking forward to the, to the product that will, that will be coming from this.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I also just wanted to acknowledge that, as Travis said, we've been doing some more intentional outreach with our Black community members and understanding that though that the numbers in the demographic is small, there is a huge need on, I think, Kyle, if you've been, as you said, listening to our sessions, you know, one of the things that really resonated with me in hearing from our community members was that because their numbers are so small, they're kind of scattered throughout our whole district. And one opportunity that came from having that meeting is that for many of our families and their kids, it was the first time that they've ever played with, that their kids have ever played with somebody from the same ethnic background, because they didn't even have that community or, or space in our community, in our city, to have those interactions. So that's just something that I wanted to point out, as we serve the same families, the same students, that we look for opportunities where we can really impact. And I tend to think about this even within our city. Sometimes when we talk about race, and when we talk about racism, and, and how do we lessen the impacts of systemic racism, it seems so daunting and so big that it, it's, it's hard to wrap our, our minds around what we can do as an institution. And something that I like to, like Anthony said, an analogy that I like to think about is to look at what we, what we have all done, especially here in Oregon, when we think about sustainability. We're not really arguing about, you know, what one particular person believes around, like, climate change, but we said that we wanted to lessen our impact and lessen our footprint. And so we specifically put in measures or are, build in accountability, and we, we measure that and account for that and have programs around that. So we take the same concept and look at the impact that we have in our communities of color, whether it's economic opportunities, education opportunities, that we look at the impact and the disparities that exist, and that we measure that and that we hold it up to the programs that we have in place, or the opportunities that we create in our communities. That's something that we can measure and we can see. And that's something that both of us in our city and in our school district have the opportunity to impact those same families in different ways. So I just want to thank you all for participating in, in this conversation. And this isn't the end of the conversation, this is just the beginning of the conversation. There's definitely a lot of room for improvements on our side for our district that we continue to make and that we hope to continue this dialogue. So thank you again for everyone for attending our, our work session, and to our staff, both at the city and the district for putting this on.
So I will just say to our council, we will take a short recess and then reconvene and finish our, our business. And I invite all of the school district board members and staff to join us. And as we move on to Agenda Item Point Two, which is second reading of ordinances, okay? But we'll take a five, a five-minute recess from the city council side, reconvene at 5:00.
Thanks for doing the hard work of the city, folks.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all for your time.
See y'all later.
Thanks, everyone.